To 4.02, 4.02 to 4.03, 4.03 will become 4.04. All those in favor of the agenda is amended? That passes eight to zero. Moving on, our student leaders from Olympia, welcome this evening.
Hello, my name is Jimmy Dong and I am an eighth grader from Greece Olympia Middle School. Olympia provides many musical opportunities for students in middle and high school. Olympia also hosts musical events for students alongside friends and family. Here are many of Olympia's music groups and events. Here are some photos of the music events at Olympia.
Hi, I'm Queen Hernandez and I'm an eighth grader at Greece Olympia High School. Olympia Athletics. Here is a picture of the relay team that won on modified. This is my team and Bellas team. We did win first place for our relay and this is a picture of us. We have many sports, track and field, football, soccer, volleyball, swimming, cross country, basketball. We're really good when it comes down to sports. Both soccer teams brought home numerous awards this season and they did great.
My name's Lisa Ha. I'm in grade six and I go to Greece Olympia. Olympia has an after-school event called Game Night and at Game Night there's snacks and board games. In Game Night you can also hang out with friends and have fun.
Hello, I am a junior at Olympia. My name is Safa Hussein. In October Olympia hosted its very own Spooktacular at sixth grade door decorating. The Spooktacular was a Halloween event with a haunted house, games, crafts, and snacks, all led by NHS, Ignition, and many other student volunteers. The door decorating was a sixth grade door decoration competition to see who had the best Halloween decorated doors, led by Ignition mentors.
Hello, I am Isabella Pastrana. I am eighth grader at Greece Olympia. Spirit Week is like within the last week of December before we go off to break. We have different things for each day where we get to show our school spirits. Monday we did pajama day. Tuesday we did culture day where we got to dress up from our culture. Wednesday we did class colors where each different grade got assigned a color and you would show up in that color to show your school spirit and your great spirit. Thursday was movie character day where you would dress up as your favorite movie character. And then Friday was holiday gear where you would show up as festive as you could basically.
Olympia has many academic programs such as the ECHS program, the AVID program, and mosaics. The ECHS program allows students to gain college credits while still being in high school. Olympia's AVID program prepares students in grades seventh through twelfth for colleges. Olympia also has a mosaics class that teaches students on how on how to build relationships, teaches them about cultures, and teaches them how to be a better person in general. Our AVID students have been very productive this year and listed are all of the things that our AVID students have accomplished.
Olympia has a diverse selection of clubs and is open to anyone. Here are some of the clubs listed on the slide.
Olympia gives back. Olympia has had numerous charity events throughout the year and last year. We did do Pink Out Day where we wore all pink to support breast cancer. We did Thanksgiving baskets, Red Ribbon Week, trunk and treat, visit to our elementary schools, which I'm pretty sure a lot of people had fun with that.
Every morning at Olympia excluding SCL Day, we start off the day, we start off our morning, or we start off the day with our morning show, which is directed by Mr. Kalitri but the position was then handed over to Mr. Coin. The morning show is a student-led with script writing and producing. We even have a student director. Moving forward, we hope to have new cameras, teleprompters, and we hope this upgrades the show.
We have some amazing adults at our school. A lot of the teachers are a little lenient with us, but we still do get our work done and they make the class more fun and more engaging for the students. A lot of the teachers do apply pressure because they do see a lot of potential in us and here are some of the amazing adults at our school.
Olympia's student population is very diverse, which makes for a great community and student population.
Olympia was honored this year by being chosen to be represented at the New York State TSL Conference, represented by Mrs. Gillian Bransford, where a video about a positive and welcoming environment about Olympia was shown at the conference. In the future, some upcoming events we hope to have is World Hijab Day where we will celebrate and have a community conversation as well as sell stickers to support hijab. We also have many upcoming music events such as the Prism Concert and Coffee House. And we also have for our upcoming musical, we have Shrek the Musical in March. Thank you.
Thank you guys very much. I'm gonna have you come over here and we're gonna do a big group picture if you don't mind and then I'll let you go home and do your homework. All right, moving on to our union comments, GTA.
All right, good evening. My name is John Clifford. I'm from Christina High School and with me is
Amy McCabe. I'm also from Greece Athena.
So GTA asked us to come tonight to speak on behalf of the cellphone policy. And looking back at, you know, I've been in Greece for 26 years, so looking back at some of the before and afters, one of the things I noticed was prior to COVID, we had a number of dances that were always very popular and the few years before COVID, they were fizzling out to either not having them or about 125 students or so were attending. This year we had 475 attend our homecoming dance and I think that was a direct result of seeing the student interaction. And the excitement really actually started in the cafeteria from the past few years when you would notice students were sitting around often not talking with each other but staring at their phones while sitting with their best friends to lunch table to all of a sudden walking around and seeing all of this interaction where kids were even getting out of their seats and moving around the classroom and even the noise level was way up, which is okay, that's a place to let loose. Just a remarkable difference in their excitement and enthusiasm and so much so that we're actually having another dance in two weeks. Engagement in classroom activities, lessons has improved. A decrease in conflict cycle between students and teachers with the policy being so cut and dry and the exceptional job that the administrators have done in our building that nearly a quick phone call to the unit office or security and somebody's right there to deal with it, not have the situation escalate has been significant.
Yeah, I agree with everything John has said and I think I've been in Athena a little longer than him, I don't want to put a date on that, but it just, the change is profound. It's like teaching before, before, you know, we've had cellphones around for a while, that's not new, but it all of a sudden blossomed into the go-to. And I think as adults, we can all say, we've had those moments where instead of interacting with someone, you felt shy or embarrassed or something else and you just use that cellphone as a way to block that interaction. And we all know as adults that we shouldn't do that, right? And so then when we put that device in the hands of our children, it becomes addicting and it becomes this thing where they cannot help themselves. And so the change and the amount of time that in the interactions we can have with kids now are so much more positive. After, you know, after we came back after COVID, a lot of our interactions, we had to make those decisions of, do I ask? So if you were the classroom, we might start class in about three-quarters to almost 90% of you would have your phone out. So do I ask you to put it away? Do I personally ask you? Do I not? Does that lead with a conflict because Mr. Smolien over here is gonna be grouchy about that? I don't know, right? He's having a bad day. And so that doesn't happen anymore. We don't have that. We don't have to stop instruction for that. The kids don't have the constant barrage of information from each other back and forth during class. You give class time for them to work on something, like Mr. Clifford said, like John said, one of the happiest moments was in the beginning of the year where we realized this was really working, I had a study hall. And I'll be honest, I thought, study hall the first week of school with a cellphone policy? Oh, this is gonna be a long 52 minutes. And it wasn't. They were loud and talking and I don't mean loud, like horribly loud, like it was exciting to hear conversation and we were chatting about things from the summer and et cetera, back and forth. And I actually, this is a true story, 100%, our science teacher aide came in and she came over to my desk and she said, they're talking. And I said, I know and I'm going to let them keep doing it, right? Like this was, it's such, I can't even describe the difference. Now I know the students, if we ask them, they'd love them back, I know. We all know that, right? If you let me eat chocolate all day long, I'd do that too, but I know I shouldn't, right? And so we know they shouldn't. So I can't, we can't thank you enough. I also want to just briefly mention the process since I was involved in that process and I have been in Greece for a very long time. When I joined that district committee last spring, I will not lie, my friends and colleagues were like, oh, you're on another committee. What are you doing? You know that it's never gonna go anywhere and nothing's going to get done and that is true. That was the lunch table talk, right? It was like, what are you doing, Amy? And I said, I'm gonna, nope, I'm going, we're gonna try it. And it moved forward perfectly. We got feedback from all stakeholders, decisions were made, and I have to commend the board for taking a risky step that was not necessarily popular and following through with it. And we're continuing, and I know in all the buildings, to reevaluate and reassess and make it better, listen to the students, listen to the parents, listen to the teachers, the admin, everyone, and move forward. So on behalf of making my last few years here at Greece really, really good ones, thank you. And it's for the kids, I mean, this is, whether they want to admit it, it's a better environment.
So the last few comments that I wanted to use to wrap up would be about a little bit from the teacher's perspective because we always look at what benefits students, but there are policies that benefit clearly the staff. This has been one that has benefited the staff. Staff is much more, more, it's been better for our social, emotional health to be able to deal with students on a different level without having the cellphones on and like I said, with that conflict cycle. I wear a lot of different hats in Greece from coaching to the last 25 years, I've also been employed by BOSI's during the summer, in the last seven years as the summer school principal. And the enthusiasm and excitement of the Greece staff this summer and staff from all over the county want to know how this was gonna work. We were the envy of so many other districts, suburban, city school district, Eastside School District, that wishes that the school board and leadership would do the same thing in their districts. While it doesn't always come out in their meetings and in the public, it was very much the forefront of a lot of staff thought in other districts. The other thing is I do some work at Roberts Wesleyan with the master's thesis writing class and the number of graduate students bringing up this policy, how is it working? This is a policy of teacher retention and it's a policy of teacher recruitment. In the looming days of a substantial teacher shortage, which we know is coming in the near future, this is something that is gonna save the profession. And it is bigger than just simply how it benefits our students, student learning is benefiting every adult in all of our buildings at all levels. So I would urge you to think about those consequences for our profession as it goes forward as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bo. Is there anyone here from GASSA this evening? All right, moving on to EGSET. Gus and Teamsters. All right, moving on to Residence Forum. My first speaker this evening is Mr. Stensel. Welcome, Jordan.
I have to first say, this clock is very intimidating, so bear with me, I'll try to make all my points concise. So thank you for having me speak again. I hope all of you had a great holiday, great New Years. I really wanted to talk tonight about the parent exchange. I attended the one that was on December 14th and we discussed the power of advocacy. And the idea of empowering parents to come forward and to speak about not only their concerns but solutions and feedback and ideas about making change and progress within the district, I think is really a good thing. It's optimistic. And one of the things I wanted to mention here is, I know board member Ms. Farmer was there at the last meeting, thank you for being there. I would love to see all of the rest of you be there, including our district leadership. I know some of you were there that I remember faces, but I'd like to see more of you there because I plan to be there. I mean, it was at a whim that I got an email last year that said, you know, be involved as a parent. I'm like, me? A parent? Involved with the district? How? So I just clicked it, it took a chance. And then I joined and I realized I could be involved in many ways. That's also what led me here to speaking here tonight, you know? It's about having courage and although I can't, you know, be where you guys are and decide policy and procedure when I, I can at least put my voice out there and really give back in a way that benefits my daughter, who's a student at Olympia, but also, you know, the student body as a whole throughout the district. So the other thing I wanted to mention too, not only just inviting you, but for parents watching this at home or those here, please come to the parent exchange. We don't have enough of you. The more voices we have as a collective group, the better off we are. Because that feedback that we have, good, bad, neutral, doesn't matter. It's all about quality improvement at the end of the day. And the district leaders are there, the board members are there, they are listening. They do take this information back and do things with it. We may not see the whole process on the backend, but they do follow up with us and that is the most important part. And so I plan to keep going there. I plan to keep being a voice, a champion for my daughter, a champion for all of our kids. And I hope to have more parents there to speak out and really be a lightning rod for good. So with that said, I want to just jump briefly into the cellphone thing. And this isn't a critique or anything negative really. I remember when this was voted on back in June, I was actually at the first board meeting I attended in person, I just sat as a spectator in the audience and I believe there was a cost piece to it, that's 50,000 or whatnot to continue to bring the yonder pouches back. Perhaps, an idea I have, I don't know if it's feasible or not, but I'm always trying to be solutions-focused, why not have the students return the yonder pouches when they graduate? So you don't have to continue to buy more and more and more. Even if you could do it as a half measure, save yourself 25 grand or whatever, right? It saves money on the taxpayer end. And I just want you to think of it this way, right now my daughter has a Chromebook provided by the school. The school expects in its policies and procedures that that Chromebook is taken care of, it's maintained well, there's no graffiti on it, no writing, no nothing, and it's returned when she's done. It's expected of all the students. The same thing could be asked of students regarding the yonder pouches. And if you're worried about like kids writing their names on it or whatnot, there's little patches you can put on these things that you can, you could rip off that would have the kid's name on it and it wouldn't do any damage to the product itself. So there's a solution I have regarding the products that could save the taxpayer money and maybe win more people on your side related to this. And with that, I thank you for your time and have a good one.
Thank you, Mr. Stensel.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Milan? No. Nope. I'll have it sent to you. Mr. Milan?
Good evening, my name is Miguel Milan and I'm parent leader. I wanted to speak on what the superintendent stated to us, to me, in our last meeting. You had mentioned that you were proud at the district's graduation rate. On paper, that looks and sounds good, but the simple math wasn't adding up for me. When your numbers are at 31% proficient in ELA, how are you able to graduate 93% of the students? Math tells us about 62% of the kids aren't proficient in reading and math. Simple math, simple common sense should indicate that most kids that are graduating shouldn't. Once again, math is just not adding up. The Student Succeeds Act, I believe, created a system that I would coin the Students Fail's Act. Just like I mentioned in the last meeting, Greece was okay with and insisted that my son go on to the next grade and my son could not read at all. He couldn't even do the alphabet. But Greece wanted to pass him anyways. That forced us to remove him and get the education that he has the right to get. Parents should have the right to get their kids educated, all children, and I'm sorry I missed a couple spots here, all children have the right to get an education, all education, an education without legal loopholes that the districts exploit and hit parents and defensive kids with. Educated kids equal a better Greece, a better society. That's how students will succeed, so let's act. Student leaders consistently discuss equity. Equity is on everything these days. There's no equity without literacy. Think about that and let it soak in. I know parents that have dedicated themselves to literacy by doing extensive research and getting educated and communicating with educators that are having positive results and much more. Invite them to the table, you'll be impressed with the passion and knowledge that they have. I'm sure they can help. And to the board, most school boards forget that, forget that they're the only check that parents have on the district administration. School boards must roll up their sleeves, partner with parents, and bring evidence-based literacy instruction to their constituents and that's the children in our district. Board members must visit the schools and look. Board members should visit the schools and listen. Visit the schools and speak with teachers. Visit the schools and talk to students and parents. Board members must visit the schools and see for themselves firsthand what's going on. This room is filled with very smart people, but by sitting here and having meetings is not enough. So if you're not going out and seeing what's going on at the schools, hopefully you will. This proactive approach starts with the board president and continues with all board members. As a parent, we expect and demand that you do what we elected you to do. I, we, will only embrace solutions and not excuses. And I thank you and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Milan, Happy New Year as well. Our next speaker is Madalena Scrivens. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that. Welcome this evening. Anytime.
Hi, my name is Madalena Scrivens and I'm here to talk about the yonder pouches being used in our schools. This isn't a, I'm not criticizing the policy, I actually want to talk about some good things that I've seen in the school because I talked to the Assistant Superintendent in the summer about the new policy and my concerns with it because honestly, someone with anxiety like mine, I find it very helpful to have a contact to my parents very close by. But during the school year, it has been nice to see people talking to each other and just a lot of people really engaging more than they used to. And there has been less fights, which is a relief to me. But I do want to bring up some points that actually were brought to light with the new policy. So first of all, I feel like the board sometimes sees the student body as just that, a body, a generalization. And while that is normally how you'd view a group of people, I think it is important to understand that there are parts of us that all we do is follow the rules, it's really all we do. And I really have no problem with it, but policies like these, it frustrates me somehow because having something of mine taken away because of the actions of other people, that isn't a good feeling to have. And even though this policy was good, I feel like, I don't know, I feel like we should be considered more during big decisions like these, especially because most of the student body, we don't mean any harm. The next is, in the music district, especially voice class, it's been very hard to just use the Chromebooks. For part of our instruction, we tend to have recordings and practice with those recordings as to get ready for our solos and everything. And with all the music sites blocked on the Chromebooks and just the recordings that we get in Google Classroom that our teachers have made for us, they're very hard to hear and they get sped up and messed up. And so I felt very underprepared going into this concert this past winter, which also wasn't very a good feeling. But, sorry. I know this was a big investment in our district and it was for a good cause, but I do want to bring light to other things in our school, especially Greece Athena. We have broken bathrooms that half the stalls don't work and you have to kind of like test the sinks before you use them because either they won't work or they'll blow up in your face. And just a lot of the use of drugs, it's been a really big issue. And I feel like drugs aren't considered as serious as an issue as cellphones are right now. And I think that needs to change because it's not fun walking into a high school that just reeks more than usual. And also, this has been really great, having no conflict in the hallways and having people talk to each other, but I can't help but think that sometimes it would be better if we tried to integrate this new technology as it's growing and advancing into our schools as it can make things faster and more efficient. And I think if we start doing that earlier, maybe it could, I don't know, stop the use of just wanting to of just wanting to rebel, like kind of reverse psychology. But that's really all I have for you tonight, and thank you for having me speak here. I'm sorry it took so long for me to get here. But thank you so much, and it's nice to finally be here.
Thank you very much.
That was, that was amazing. There needs to be more of that. Good on her. That was to hear her right from there, and she said it, and it's better than I'm going to be able to say anything, but you can go ahead. Oh, it's already going. It's intimidating. He's right. So I want to talk about code of conduct. Actually, no, I'm going to talk about yonder pouches real quick. From everything I hear, kids aren't using them that much. I agree with the premise of it. As a father of a son that was being bullied, who would contact me through it, I was against it at first, but if they are being used correctly, it is helping. So again, I was against it, but I'm, I'm seeing the benefit of it. It just comes back to code of conduct, and I think that we're not having enough consequences for the kids. The culture in the school is becoming broken. The kids that are misbehaving are becoming more emboldened. The kids that are being victims of this are shutting down more. Since the last time I stood up here, I said it was getting better, and unfortunately, it hasn't. I received a phone call. I couldn't take the phone call. I got a voicemail from the principal saying, oh, I talked to your son, everything went great. I get, he gets home from school, and I talked to him, and he said, no, we had a mediation today, which is on a level one of the code of conduct, which is weird because it's about bullying, and that should be a level two. They're still on the mediation stage. A year later, dealing with two stepbrothers, we're still on the mediation stage. You can't keep putting kids in front of bullies because the kid sits there and says, he said that, he said that, he said that. Oh, no, no, I didn't say anything about his dead grandmother. He said that. And then they ask the kid, is your grandmother dead? No? Then how did Colin say something about your grandmother that's dead when she's not dead? It's very hard to comfort 13-year-old boy that lost his grandmother this summer when a boy keeps making fun of him for it and then denies it, and nothing happens. The kid doesn't apologize when he leaves mediation. Nothing is coming of the mediation. You can't keep putting these kids that are being bullied in front of it. Under section two, or the level two of the code of conduct, he should be getting suspended. Nothing's happening. My son is now starting to lose faith in his principal. It's heartbreaking that we keep going through this. And I know I'm not the only one that does it, but I will keep standing here and saying it that it's continuing to happen. And I'm begging you to bring this in the open. I'm not trying to trash the district. I just want to find alternative opportunities. I'm all about having, it's not bad to talk about bad things. If you come up with a response on why, what we're going to do to be better. No offense, I, I was kind of shocked that, I only heard good things the first couple of board meetings I came to. That's all we talked about here. We have way too many students, and there's, are too many problems in this district just to concentrate on the good things. And again, it's not to trash everything, it's not to do it. If we have responses, if we pivot, we, we're bringing these kids out of something that nobody's ever gone through. For two years, we pulled them up in their house and said, look at this screen and learn. And then the worst thing we do is when we come back, we take away some of their screens. It's, they've been through a lot, and I just think what we're doing right now isn't the best. I think we could do better, and we need to really hold them accountable. It's not about expelling kids, it's not about throwing them out. We do have Phoenix Academy, Alternative Schooling can help kids. I know two of my neighbors had their kids go to Phoenix, graduated, both are in college. It, it works. We just need to find the best place for kids. And unfortunately, Greece Odyssey isn't the best for my son right now, it's, in my opinion. And I'm hoping we can lead to some suggestions to make it better. So look at that, I'm out of time. And Happy New Year, everyone. So thank you for your time.
Happy New Year to you as well, Mr. Thayer. Thank you.
It was very interesting to learn of a program whereby our students study the Constitution and develop expertise in our constitutional republic. It's unfortunate that our school board doesn't share a knowledge of or respect for our country's guiding principles. The inalienable rights referenced in the Declaration of Independence are rights that all people are born with and can never be taken away. Our Constitution was unique because it held that we, the people, receive our rights from God and then establish government to serve our interests. When our Constitution was written, this was so important to the founders, who were well-versed in the tyranny that often accompanies power, that they wrote amendments identifying these God-given rights so that their intent was abundantly clear. The first 10 of these became our Bill of Rights and are considered immutable and absolute. This brings us to the First Amendment, which identifies the five most important rights. Of particular interest is my freedom of speech, which was violated last month when I was not allowed to address this body. I was silenced twice before I could bring important information involving the indoctrination of evil prevalent in our government and bringing tremendous pressure on our schools. Your action, Mr. President, is especially egregious because I have spoken at every opportunity to defend and protect our children from governmental policies which threaten their well-being and will result in the breakdown of family. Were you not elected to do the same thing? What is your agenda that you are so threatened by what I had to say that you disregard the oath you took to preserve the Constitution and serve the constituents you represent? The transgender program being forced on our children violates the freedom of religion
Ms. Leike, I'm going to cut you off there. Again, this doesn't have anything to do with
Of a majority of our citizens and taxpayers.
Shut your microphone off. Mrs. Leike, you're done. You're not going to win this. You're all done, Mrs. Leike. I'll talk over you. I could talk way louder. Thank you. All right, thank you. Moving on. 2.01, can I have Sony move the staffing to the table, please? Moved by Vice President Malore. Seconded by Mr. Maloney. Comments, questions, or concerns on staffing? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. Can I have Sony move the GTA on ways to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Farmer, seconded by Mrs. Flores. Any comments, questions, or concerns on those? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. Can I have Sony move the GTA on regards to girls' flag football pilot to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Flores, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to the accept MOA, can I have Sony move that to the table, please? Moved by Vice President Malore, seconded by Mrs. Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. Can I have Sony move the individual agreements kids care to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Flores, seconded by Mrs. Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on those? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. 2.06, the jewel agreement, can I have Sony move that to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Swicki, seconded by Mrs. Farmer. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. The settlement agreement, can I have Sony move that to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Farmer, seconded by Mr. Maloney. Any comments, questions, concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. 4.01, facilities update. Superintendent Groutmann.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to have Mr. Keller come on up to the podium. Mr. Keller is our Director of Buildings and Grounds for the district. And what we had asked him to prepare tonight is just a brief update for us on the storm that we had just before the holiday break. I know that there was a lot of very happy staff members, that school was canceled on Friday, and probably a lot of happy kids. I don't know if as many parents that were trying to get their last-minute things done were as happy, but that Friday was certainly sort of well-placed. Unfortunately, for our Buildings and Grounds Department, that meant a whole lot of work and a lot of damage and things going on over that weekend. So what's important, and what we wanted to make sure that we shared, is just an update of the damage that occurred and also an update in terms of what we're doing to move forward. Obviously, our kids are in school today and all in a safe environment, but that was due to a lot of the work that was done by your department. So I would thank you in advance, but also just appreciate you giving us an update tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to briefly review the impact, response, and current status of the Christmas weekend storm, as we affectionately call it. School was canceled Friday, December 23rd, due to the forecast storm beginning in the afternoon. The storm consisted of 50 to 60 mile an hour winds and rapidly decreasing temperatures down to 20 below zero wind chills. By the late afternoon, early evening, we had 10 Greece Central sites with no power. Those sites were Pine Brook, Lake Shore, Patty Hill, Brookside, Odyssey, Olympia, Athena, the transportation building, Alcott Road, and the Early Learning Center. We quickly dispatched our electricians to isolate three-phase equipment and restart equipment once power was restored. It was quickly evident that communication was going to be a challenge with multiple sites impacted and many stakeholders. Those include principals, administration, food service, IT, the radio stations, security, and everybody wants to know what's going on at that moment. To facilitate this communication, we created a Google Sheet that was shared with the district and school leadership to track issues live and streamline the flow of information. Included in the Google Sheet, it provided current information and status, allowed for collaboration, reduced logging down of FOP staff with additional requests for updates via text and calls, tracked progress of repaired work, tracked expenses for potential insurance claims, excuse me, allowed for our TMA work order system to be updated with correct information retroactively. Power was restored at all sites by Saturday morning, which was a small miracle, thankful to RGN for getting that done so quickly. We performed building checks at every site on Saturday morning and Monday morning to identify and contain any issues. On Saturday morning, we found 12 separate univentilators in classrooms and piping associated with those univentilators that were frozen. This was caused by power outages resulting in no water flow at UVs and piping along exterior-facing west walls. The overnight minus 20-degree wind chills and 50 to 60 mile an hour winds created conditions for systems to fail. The frozen pipes were at the Early Learning Center, Athena, Odyssey, and Lake Shore. All of the leaks were repaired and units heating by Thursday, December 29th. That was our unofficial goal because we were supposed to be off Friday, and after working through the previous weekend, we wanted to be done ideally by Thursday. We accomplished that. Majority of the work was completed by FOP mechanics. We did have support from Wolf Mechanical, one of our partnering contractors who worked at Lake Shore. In total, we had over 100 issues identified and tracked that needed our attention. We also leveraged our relationship with Contractor Vendor Day Automation, who helped us to identify additional issues throughout the district through our building management All of our schools opened today with no impact from the storm damage. We have a few remaining repairs to make as ordered materials arrive, but the systems, all systems are operational. Successfully mitigating the large volume of challenges we encountered through the holiday weekend was directly the result of outstanding efforts of many FOP staff. From mechanics responding to immediate high priority problems to custodial staff cleaning up water from multiple leaks and performing building checks to ensure we contained and documented all problems. Our charge, as always, is to do everything possible to resolve all issues and limit any impact to education. The dedication and thoroughness of the FOP staff to rise to the occasion was not unique to this challenge, but was yet another example of why I'm privileged to lead this department. I'd be happy to answer, sorry, happy to answer any questions.
Mrs. Flores.
I first want to say thank you very much to you and your team. You guys treat this property like it's your own, and it goes a long way. I'm constantly amazed how prepared you guys are, and you talk about the things that you did to mitigate the issues, but I know that there's a lot of things that you do to prepare for these things in advance to do that, which isn't always shared and which people don't always realize. Can you maybe provide an example of some things that you guys do in anticipation of these things happening that can alleviate the costs to the district because you have been so well-prepared?
Yeah, in this case, it's a forecast storm, which gave us the advantage of planning ahead, so we had resources available. Obviously, most people had plans for the holiday weekend, but they readily gave up those plans. On Friday, we had people work approximately 12 hours to simply respond immediately to electrical issues and mitigate those. By Saturday, we had guys work 16 hours straight who were isolating leaks to try and protect district resources so we wouldn't, we could limit the damage. We were able to do that completely by Saturday evening about nine o'clock, and on Sunday, nobody had to work on Christmas, short of a couple of guys checking the computer to see if we had new issues, which thankfully we didn't. We all returned on Monday, addressed the immediate issues, did another building check to see if we had more damage. We did roof inspections, and again, we were able to isolate and deal with the issues we had to on Monday, and then came back to work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and were completed with all of repairs by Thursday. So it's, when you say prepare, it's the training of our staff, it's the exceptional dedication our staff has, and you hit it on the head, that they, they treat it like their own, and they take great pride in what they do, so.
We can't thank you enough.
Anything else? Mr. Bonagario.
Mr. Keller, again, I want to just echo that thank you because I know that was, there were a lot of people without power, a lot of people in tough situations. It was a holiday, and you and your team were working around the clock, and yeah, thank you. It's all.
Thank you.
I would end just by pointing out, he had a spreadsheet shared with extended cabinet by like early Friday with every little detail of what was going on and the status of it. So it also helps us as leaders just like know and feel comforted that things are being taken care of, and that goes a long way, too. So thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thanks, girl.
And if I can take one liberty, I wanted to thank President McCabe for mentioning Greg Hale in a previous meeting who's retiring January 20th. He's got 40-plus years, and it meant a lot to me, and I know it meant a lot to him, so thank you.
And 4.02, reserve funds. Superintendent Groutmann.
Yes, I'm going to have Mr. Cooley come up and share with you the, the work that we've done with reserves, reserve funds. As you know, reserve funds are a huge part of the work that we do in terms of how do we operate a budget? How do we ensure that we're being strategic with the use of funds? So there's a lot of time and energy and thought put into how we, we allocate and use these funds. So with that said, I'm just going to turn it right over to Romeo to share the analysis that he has for us tonight.
Thank you. I will say, following Kurt's not an easy, easy thing to do, so I don't know if it'll match up to his excitement, but I'm going to try. So our reserve funds, this is all as of June 30th, 2022, as we ended last year, where we ended up and how we got there, as well as we bring it up this time of year, which is a little bit, you know, three, four months into the school year, but we like to go over this now so that we can use these funds as we go into the planning process for next year and develop the budget for the year after that as well. So now's a timely, a timely period for us to take a look at and see where we are as we go into the budget process for next year. We do have strong reserves. I will say, you know, it's been somewhat intentional that we have strong reserves. We've known where the state has been in the past with promises and things that they would like to do that they can't. Some of it is also due to the fact that we've gotten other funding sources, federal funds, increase in our foundation aid, which has generated some additional surpluses for us because we have other funding streams to pay for some other things. But we have intentionally put these funds into reserves that you'll see here for this reserves that you'll see here for this evening so that we can strategically plan on getting off of the federal funds over the next year or two, as well as how we're going to use those funds going forward. We'll bring that back to the board. I had a future presentation. So with that, why do we have reserves? A few reasons listed on the screen here. It's the legal way to be able to save funds for a future use, which is what we do. All the reserves are approved by the board and/or taxpayers, and so are the uses of those funds. It helps us reduce our long-term borrowing costs. Local share of our capital projects, for instance, helps us with our tax rates, avoids mid-year budget cuts should we have them, which we haven't seen in a little while, but it's always a potential, and it helps us to weather different financial storms such as state aid holdbacks, unanticipated expenditures, and even emergency projects such as the 2017 Arcadia Middle School Roof that blew off the school, and we were able to fund that locally and get that done as an emergency project. Only the Board of Education can direct the use of reserve funds. It is the responsibility of the Board to monitor and manage Board Reserve Funds. That's why we bring it here to the Board as an analysis and a report and a presentation to the public. Only the Board can transfer funds between reserves or appropriate funds for the next tax levy school year. So another purpose that many don't see with our reserves and having a strong reserves is related to our borrowing capacity, which the district always has. Moody's is our investor rating service. They take a look at this a couple times a year for us because we do go out and borrow twice a year. And as of September, I just threw a couple quotes up here that have come up over the last, the most recent analysis that we did. In the first one, you know, they talk about our standalone credit quality and ability to repay loans. They also talk about our sound financial position, which we've been able to maintain over several years, and our conservative budgeting practices, and it reflects our healthy reserves and our liquidity. So they give us an AA3 rating, and they note our credit strengths, having a stable tax base in the Rochester area, our strong reserves and liquidity, and our moderate long-term liabilities and our low fixed costs. So what does that mean kind of dollar-wise? So a couple examples that I wanted to point out is back in 21, 22, school year, we went out for a bus bonds for $1.1 million, and we actually got a rate of .39% for five years on $1.1 million for a five-year period. That's just about a quarter percent for five years because of our reserves. Now, granted, that was a pandemic period at the time or just after it, but recently, we borrowed $1.8 million for the 22, 23 bus purchase, and we got that for just under 3%, which again, 3% in today's market is sort of unheard of, and we can be able to do that because of our practices and because of the reserves that we have and the credibility and the liquidity that we can show Moody's to help us. So what does AA3 mean? We usually show this slide just to help folks understand. We're at, Greece is at the AA3 level, which is a high-grade level. You can see, I hit just through a couple examples up there. You start with non-investment grade ratings down in the BA1, 2, and 3, and then you go to BAAAs, and then AAA prime is the one you hear out there that everybody strives for, but very few get to. City of Rochester is an A2, was recently upgraded, or has been at an A2 for several years. Monroe County has been upgraded to an A1, and New York State is an AA1 rating. So us being at an A3 rating is actually a pretty high rating and goes a long way with our borrowing costs, and we always have borrowing costs, given that we do $10 to $15 million a year in capital projects every summer. Let's talk about the reserves a little bit. This is what our financial position looked like at the end of June 2021 versus June 22. Our overall reserves increased by about $26 million, primarily due to funds that we placed into our workers' comp reserve, because that is a flexible reserve for us, our building reserve, because that is going to be the reserve we use to pay for the next capital project, to pay for the local share, and our ERS reserve, we put a decent amount of money into, again, because that is flexible and we can use that in a variety of ways over the next couple, two or three years. Looking at some of the other funds in the district, our food service fund balance was increased by about $2 million. If you recall, during the COVID year, they actually, when you took revenues minus expenditures, they lost about a million and a half, almost $2 million. This year, they went up $2 million, primarily due to the fact that all schools were eligible for free meals, and the reimbursement rate that we were getting from the state was higher than it would normally have been in the past, plus the fact that we got some extra funds from federal programs and a supply chain assistance grant that came to the district. So we ended up back from just under a million, our $900,000 fund balance in food service to almost $2.9 million as of June. In the capital fund, only a couple projects remain open. The Excel 2 is, the balance is $325,000. We're using that to fund our lockset project for the cafeteria and auditorium doors, and you can see Reimagine Greece is at $13 million, cash at June 30th. That service fund, we've got about $3.5 million remaining in that fund. We primarily use that to keep that local shares we've talked about in the past for capital projects at $2.7 million. As we look at our appropriated fund balance, what you'll see here, and this has been a goal of ours, is to get this to zero. If you look back around 2010, 11 through about 13, 14, that four-year period, we always appropriated out of the current year budget about $7 million, maybe a little bit more. We were able to reduce that starting in 2014, 15 for about seven years to about $6 million. Last year, we were able to go from $6 million to about $4.3 million, and for the current year, for 22, 23, we actually were able to achieve the goal of getting to zero appropriated fund balance going forward. And what that means is we do not need to rely on current year operations and funding to help fund the budget for the next school year, which is a huge milestone for us, and we're hoping that we can keep that at zero going forward. Unappropriated fund balance, this is what our rainy day fund looks like over the year shown. It's a good practice. It's limited to 4% of your next year budget, and we have stayed right at 4% throughout the period of time here shown on the chart. So we've stayed, we've always been in compliance with the law. We've stayed under 4%, and we have those funds available to us, pending Board approval for anything that we deem we need to be completed with those funds. Now, I'll take a look at the individual reserves, go through those briefly. Our workers' comp reserve, we're self-insured for workers' comp. We pay claims as they're needed. It's a flexible reserve to us, and what you'll see over on the right-hand side, the green bars are deposits in, the red bars are withdrawals from the applicable reserve. We have deposited money into that reserve. We're at about $14.5 million, and again, it's a flexible reserve, so we will be able to use those funds as we need. It doesn't need to be specifically used to only fund worker comp claims. Take a look at our employment reserve. You can see the past year, 21, 22, we deposited about a half a million. These are to pay claims as needed. Again, $7.5 million balance, and it's a flexible reserve, much like the workers' comp reserve that we just saw. Look at our insurance reserve, $2.8 million currently. Last year, we deposited $2 million into the reserve. $1 million of that, we earmarked towards any claims that may be claimed against us regarding the Child Victims Act. So that has been out there for a little while. However, last year, they extended the claim period by one year, and they included adults in the category who can file, those that are over 18. So in anticipation, or just to protect us against any claims that may surface over the next year for any adults who may have fallen victim, we put away $1 million for that, and the other $1 million of the deposit was to cover cyber-related incidents. There have been a couple districts who have been hijacked by cyber incidents. Luckily, we've got a lot of good things in place to help prevent that, but what I've heard from colleagues is when that happens, call your attorney and have your checkbook ready and order the two pieces of advice. So we have gone ahead and put away $1 million for cyber, cyber event incidents into this reserve. Tax surtrary, these are for claims that organizations in the district feel that their assessment is over assessed. They file a claim. We have a methodology that we follow to put away funds to handle any potential court cases that are in their favor. As you see here, the last three years, the green bars, the number of tax surtraries that has been filed since COVID has gone up. However, last year remained fairly steady because we only needed to deposit about $38,000 into that reserve to get us to $3.4 million to handle any potential claims that may come up there. Liability reserve, this is, helps us to pay any liabilities when court ordered. We can use it for 3028 and Section 75 claims. We can go to 3% of the annual budget, which for us would be somewhere around $8 million. So therefore, we did make a deposit into the liability reserve for $3 million last year, took us to $5.5 million on a, which represents about 2% of where we could be of the 3%. ERS reserve, this is used to limit the impact of any rate increases. We talked about this, I think, in an earlier meeting. The ERS and TRS rates are lagged by three, two to three years, so we are anticipating that those rates will start to increase over the next two or three years. Therefore, we've put funding of about $9 million into this reserve to get us to about $18.7 million. Again, this is a flexible reserve that we can pull funding out of to help us budget for a couple, the next few years if we need it. TRS is similar to the ERS. However, there's a couple limitations on it. You can only deposit 2% of certified salaries in any given year. That's why you see the deposits being about the same each year, and you're capped out, maxed out at 10% of all certified salaries. For us, this reserve would cap out right now at about $9, $9.5 million. We're currently at about $7 million, and this has to be used to offset teacher retirement system expenditures and future budgets. Our building reserve is up at $10 million. We had a reserve approved back in May of '21. We've maxed that out. This $10 million will be used to pay the local share of a future capital project for us, which we think could bring us into $35 to $45 million capital project area. This $10 million will pay for the local share so there will be no additional cost to residents for the next capital project that comes up. Bus reserve, similar to the capital building reserve, pays for the local share of our bus replacements. It's currently maxed out due to deposits that we've made. It was established back in 2017. We've deposited $9.1 million into the account, which takes us to our max, but because we have uses each year, which you see in red, we're at about a balance of $6.6 million, and this will need a lot more funding should and if the district is able to, you know, go to the electric bus initiative, there will need to be a lot more dollars in this account to help pay that local share for our residents. In summary, we've deposited about $124 million. We've taken out over the period there about $48 million. We've got a balance of about $76.3 million amongst all our reserves. You'll see those here on our financial statements. The items in blue are the reserves that make up to $72.3 million, and we added a slide for this year, just to speak to this for a couple moments. But with the full foundation aid implementation, it's not the first time the state has said that they would do it. They're in better shape now than they were in the past, but we're still kind of cautious about whether they will actually follow the foundation aid formula. 23, 24 should be the final year of full implementation. Even if they do that, which would be great, and we're anticipating that they would, the question becomes what happens in '24, '25 and future years, should things kind of reverse economically? If you remember, New York State is very heavily reliant on the market for their funding. It's a huge portion of their revenues, and for us, our state aid is 50% of our revenues. So we are as contingent on the market as the state is because half of our budget comes from the state. So with that, we're going to continue to kind of monitor and see where we are with the foundation aid implementation. We're going to continue to review the federal stimulus dollars that we have in expenditures. We know when the financial cliff is coming, and we will be planning out year by year the use of these reserves to help us strategically transition from federal dollars and positions that are in the federal funds to get us to a plan where three years from now, this district is in a sustainable spot going forward. And once that three- or five-year plan is put together, we will continue to review that each year for the next three- to five-year period. So my point here being, although we do have strong reserves, we will, after we see what happens in, well, this month with the state budget and what the legislature actually approves, we'll have a better sense of what we're going to do with our, strategically do with our reverse reserve funds, and we'll bring that plan forward to the Board and to the public to let you know how we're going to use it and why.
Mr. Mullin?
Would it behoove us to start another reserve for electric buses or zero admissions reserve over the next couple of years?
Yes, it would be in, it would be in our plan. What we're not certain, we still got to get a little more information, and we're just kind of waiting on is how large does that limit need to be? We usually open up our bus reserves for about $10 million because that is sufficient for seven or eight years for us to replace our gas buses, but what we're not certain of is, does that $10 million need to be $50 million, or $80 million, or $100 million, depending on where this initiative goes? So we're not certain. We've got some time on our hands, so we're going to wait and see where that goes, but eventually, yes, we're going to need to do it.
Great, thank you. Mr. Swickin?
A question on the tax certs, right? So I know our methodology there, and it does look like the overall claims are dropping a bit. Do we, and maybe comparing to our fellow districts in the county or, you know, thereabouts, right? Are we seeing the same amount of claims, less claims, more claims, right? And are we like through that bubble? Do we feel like we're through the COVID push, right? I know you don't have a crystal ball, and I can't hold you to it, right, but it does feel like an area that, like, we could be exposed, right? And, you know, following that methodology, is that year-two stuff starts to fall off?
Yeah, I would say the number of claims compared to the rest of the county, ours by far is a lot more. We probably get 35 to 40 a year. You'll see a spike in 2021 where we had to increase the tax cert reserve by a million five. That's because on top of the 35 or 40, we've probably got another 20 on top of that. That's because on top of the 35 or 40, we've probably got another 20 on top of that. It's about leveled off. Those are still on the books. They're still filing. And ironically, you know, many of these tax cert claims are for buildings that may be 10 or 15 million dollars is what they were worth pre-COVID. And they're coming back and saying, well, they're only worth a million dollars now. So that exposes us to a huge tax liability rebate to them. So we're reserved for it. It's coming down. I'd say right now, we're still probably at about 40 a year. It's far more than many other districts. But I would say the peak has already happened.
Yep, that's great.
But that doesn't really mean that, you know, there's other, there's other folks out there that I think are getting wind of filing claims. And we see new ones trickle in that we have not seen in the past, which is a little unusual.
Yeah, and if I may, my only point there, Romeo, too, is we look at the macroeconomic conditions, right? And, you know, the talk of recession coming, right? And likely that may have more pressure on the retail industry again, right? As it's kind of just had a minor recovery through the holiday season, right? But it's just something I think we should just be watch, watch and be mindful of, right, as we, we kind of progress, especially.
I think many of those retail, I would just kind of knowing what's in there, many of those retail operations that may be feeling more pressured due to pending recession have already filed.
Yeah.
So I'm not certain. Maybe there's some more mom pa ones out there, but the big ones have already filed claims.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bonagario.
Thank you. Mr. Cluley, can you give just kind of a simple methodology of how you arrive at what an appropriate reserve amount might be?
Depending on the reserve?
Yeah, maybe you can just generalize it.
It depends on the reserve. So in the report that we did for the board, that document is intended to kind of tell you where we think the reserve should be. Some of them have actual limitations, right? So the TRS reserve says it's 2% of this and no more than 10. Or liability reserves says 3%. The ones that have no limits is really dictated by the Board of Education. So in the report that each of the board members gets, you'll see an area that says limit or duration, and it may say no limit. We try to just give the board a gauge as to how much it represents, say, of revenues or maybe what our total liability is out there. For instance, workers' comp, now we have an actuarial report though, and we kind of include that information in there. But each reserve is going to be different. And those are the discussions we got to have, like, what is too much in a reserve? What's appropriate in a reserve for those that don't have a limit or a duration in it? So that'll be a discussion we will bring through Budget Advisory Committee usually is where we will have those discussions and kind of, you know, have a, get an idea of where we should go with it. But there's really no set hard number for each of the reserves at this point.
Do we use history to guide it at all or projections?
We did in the past, but given that our foundation aid has increased so much and we've gotten the federal dollars, we kind of would have blown past all of those anyways because it's just been an increase for the district. I think as, as we come out of this and we get over there the next, next year and the year after that, we do need to have a more serious discussion about what are we going to use the reserve funds for? That's the plan I'm hoping to put together to run by Budget Advisory Committee and the board to say, here's where we are now. We think things are 90% stable. We are going to now pull 5 million out of this reserve, 10 million out of that reserve in this particular year for that reason, in this particular year for another reason, and then see if the board is acceptable to saying, we're comfortable being at $65 million in reserve versus $85 million reserve. Or no, depending on the situation, we think 80 million is where we want to be. But it's fluid. That's a, I will also add, that's a question many districts ask. There is no true guideline or set amount for this is acceptable for your district. It's what the board determines it to be. I know it's not a great answer, but I'm sorry, it's what it is.
Anything else? Ms. Flores.
What is a safe drop in the reserve balance that would not impact our credit rating, but taking into consideration where the interest rates are going? Obviously, we've borrowed at a ridiculously low rates lately and the rates are well above what that is. Forgive me for highlighting your years of experience of this, of the ups and downs that you've seen with the market, but at what point does it make more sense to take from the reserves than it does to borrow more because it's too expensive?
So we've, we've increased the reserves the last two years by a good amount of money. And we were at an AA3 three years ago. I mean, since we, since the administration, we've been at AA3. We haven't moved from there. In order to get to the next level, we'd have to put like to an AA2, which wouldn't be worth it, but we would have to put away a lot more into the reserves to satisfy Moody's to get into an AA2, which wouldn't buy us that much more better rates than what we get. However, in the downside, it's a great question that Moody's won't even answer for us. But in my mind, if I, if I had to give a number, I would say 60 to 65 million. If we went below that over too far, too quick of a period, they would see that as having a liquidity issue and could cause us to go from an AA3 to the next lower, which then we would pay on borrowing because we borrow money every single year. So that is a balance. But I'm going to, in my mind, like 65 million, if we were to go below that, I think it triggers something with Moody's that would then take us a heck of a lot longer to get back to an AA3 than it would to get us from an AA3 to, to the next lowest level.
Thank you.
But it's a great point.
Anything else? Mr. Bonagario?
Regarding building reserves.
Yes.
I know we're, we're in a process of major capital projects. Are the reserves that are established for the capital projects tied to the specific project? Or do we do that like in advance, looking way beyond even, even establishing a project?
So we do that sort of in advance. So we open up a capital reserve and we start to put money into it. And before doing that, we will normally ask our financial experts if we, you know, if we wanted to do a 35 or 40 million dollar capital project with assumptions made, how much would we need to put away in a reserve in order to make it no additional cost to residents, right? Because we would get money back from state aid. If we did a $40 million project and we did $30 million back in state aid and $10 million that we had in the reserve, there'd be no additional increase to the levy. So if we say that 40 or 50 million is where we want to be, they back into the reserve and that's what we asked to open up. That's what we did with the current. So back in '21, we knew after Reimagine Greece, we would still probably have 35 to 45 million dollars worth of work that needs to be done, which will take three years to get done. What do we need to put away in order to get there? And they told us you need a reserve of about 10 million. That's where that number came from. And we would do that if we knew we were going to have 65 another, you know, if the next project was going to be 65 million, we would ask them to back into, how much would we need to make it zero additional cost to the tax levy?
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
We ran a 4.02 cell phone update. Superintendent Grauman.
Yep, I'm going to have Dr. Zaffetz come on up. As all of you know, we have made changes to our cell phone policy and heard a little bit tonight just from a student and from some parent perspective. One thing that we promised when we brought this forward was that we would also come back to the table and review, get some feedback and share some information with the board. So that is exactly what we have done. We wanted to do that in December. We only had one meeting and we also had a thought exchange that took a little bit. We wanted to make sure that there was enough time to get adequate feedback. But with that said, I know both Mr. Fleming and Dr. Zaffetz have worked hard to really sort of compile and bring that together so that we have a big picture in terms of how people are feeling about this policy from perspective of teacher, parent, as well as students. So I'll turn it over to them to share that for you.
All right, thanks Kathy. Good evening, everybody. Just to add on to Kathy's point, just want to recognize and thank members of GTA who came this evening. Maddie Scrivens, a student from Athena. Everyone else who spoke at Residence Forum tonight, thank you for your input. We'll talk about the thought exchange a little more later, but all of those different perspectives and data hopefully will give the board a well-rounded picture to consider this evening. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Fleming to get us started and then I'll come back and finish up the presentation later.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. I want to echo Mike's thanks to GTA and to our speakers tonight. Before we get into where we currently stand with the policy, I just wanted to give you a little bit of context and bring everyone back to last spring. As you know, Steve Chatterton and I stood before the Board of Education and brought to you the information that the Stakeholder Committee had put forth. Amy McCabe mentioned that Stakeholder Committee earlier. We had a group of students, parents, teachers, administrators and security personnel who were examining our policies with regards to personal electronic devices. And that group did a lot of work to interview stakeholders, tour schools and put out surveys to gather feedback with regards to our practice last year. They submitted a thought exchange, which had about 1,300 respondents who articulated their concerns with regards to the policy as it was implemented last year. The vast majority of respondents felt that something needed to change. And the thoughts that were shared in that thought exchange are on the screen before you right now. I won't read all of them to you word for word, but the majority of respondents mentioned that cell phones seem to be causing a variety of problems, a lack of student engagement, decreased academic achievement, signs of depressive symptoms within our students and student conflict among some of our students. So as a result, the board put forth this board policy, which is articulated on this slide right here. I won't read that to you word for word, but essentially, students are allowed to bring in their personal electronic devices into school, cell phones, smartwatches, but they need to be locked in a pouch for the deranger, for the duration of the day, and then they are unlocked once that instructional day ends. As was mentioned, there was a little bit of, you know, some, some discussion around this policy, but in fact, we are not really alone. When you look at a lot of current educational publications, you will see that a lot of districts are grappling with this issue. And many districts have adopted language that is similar to what the Board of Education adopted last spring. And that's because there's been an extensive amount of research that has been done with regards to personal electronic devices in schools. Some of the studies that have been published have indicated that individuals in possession of a smartphone, smartphone, excuse me, perform significantly worse on memory tasks than those that don't have one in their possession. Furthermore, schools that have banned cell phones have shown an increase in their assessment scores. We've also seen studies that have indicated that youth who spend more time on social media have a greater likelihood of reporting depressive symptoms, and that likelihood goes up amongst our middle school students. And there's also been a strong correlation between in-person time with friends and fewer depressive symptoms among youth. I think we heard Dr. Clifford talk a little bit about that earlier this evening, just how much when students are together and they don't have that electronic device in front of them, they're interacting with one another. And studies are showing just how positive that is for students. So again, before we get into what we're currently seeing with the policy, I think it's important to talk a little bit about the Yonder System, which is what we adopted as a way of enforcing this policy. Want to talk a little bit about all the planning that we did and its rollout. We brought together our administrative team in August to make sure that all administrators in middle school and in high school were very, very clear about how this policy would be implemented and the system that we would be using. We wanted them to be able to turnkey that info to the staff once school started. So the week of September 5th, right after Labor Day, as staff was reporting back to their buildings, middle school and high school administrators turnkeyed that information with some support from Yonder, Yonder representatives in how the Yonder System would work. By the end of that week, all students in grades six through 12 had attended grade-level assemblies in which they were given very specific guidelines and procedures as to how this policy would roll out in schools. The following week, our first full week of school, we did a staggered rollout, the week of September 12th, at all of our secondary schools. That was with the support, of course, of building administrators, as well as central office staff and representatives from Yonder flew in to be with us that entire week and support that rollout. So what exactly did it look like? By now, you're probably all familiar with our Yonder Pouches. As students enter the building, each one has in grade six through 12, one of these pouches, and they are to place their electronic device, cell phones, smartwatches into this pouch, which then locks. Staff are stationed at the doors of the buildings as students are entering, and they're using an eyes-on approach to verify that students are putting their devices into these phones and locking them and then heading off to class. If a student claims to not have their phone with them, they simply walk through the doors and onto class. And that'll be important to note later on. Before the final bell rings for the day, unlocking stations are positioned throughout the buildings, on stands, on walls. I have a handheld version here. As students are dismissed, they simply take their pouch, touch it to the magnet to press the button, the pouch opens, they can retrieve their devices, they have to bring their pouch with them the next day. The devices, of course, are optional for the next day if they want to bring those or not. We were also really, really clear about what the consequences would be for students that were in violation of this policy. We recognized very early on that we needed clarity amongst all of the buildings in order for this policy to be effective. There's a table in front of you on this slide and the next that lists what happens for the first offense all the way through the fifth. Not going to read every single one, but if you look at that first row there, for the first offense, if a student has one of their devices out during the school day, it is confiscated by an administrator or their designee. That admin will hold onto the phone for the remainder of the day and will contact the parent. When the school day ends, that device is then turned back over to the student. If it happens a second time, the device is confiscated, the parent is contacted, the parent has to come and pick up the phone or smartwatch, and the student is assigned one day of in-school suspension. Now, that suspension becomes more strict as students go through the offense progression. And you can see culminating with the fifth offense, it could lead to one day of out-of-school suspension. And now to talk a little bit about how we're measuring our success of this policy is Dr. Zaffetz.
All right, thanks, Mark. So as far as looking for some progress monitoring metrics, really, we looked at three things. We have our street level data, which is really the conversations, observations that we have in each of the schools when we visit, when we hear from community members and students. We have discipline data, which we shared with the board at a retreat a couple months ago, or last month. And we also have our Thought Exchange survey, which went out to students, parents and staff during the month of November, thanks to Laurel and the Thought Exchange team for helping to set that up. For the Thought Exchange, we gave to students, teachers and then families who have students in one or more Greece middle or high schools, so our secondary schools. And we had a really nice response rate to the Thought Exchange, which we'll give you a sampling of right now. Over 4,000 people participated in the exchanges and they were asked the following questions. Share your perspective on how the new policy had changed your school experience? And if they had thoughts on whether the policy benefited the learning environment, student productivity, interactions and mental health. Really, the responses were not that different from the initial thoughts going into the school year. We had some generalities that carried over from the Thought Exchange before school right through the first three months. Overwhelmingly, there was support from staff. There was 93, 90-plus percent that met all the positivity metrics that are there for you to read, but those things with production, face-to-face interaction, reduced peer conflict. And then there was even a sentiment from staff that students' mental health had increased as a result of the policy. We also included some sample comments from staff and all the stakeholder groups, actually. sample comments from staff and all the stakeholder groups, actually. Again, like Mark, I'm not going to read through all of them for you, but just will say that from staff, there was an overwhelmingly positive response. There still is, and that's one of the things that we hear when we go into the school buildings during the course of the day. As far as from students, as you might imagine, the responses were much less positive, but there were still some there. There were still some, like Maddie said earlier, some positive comments on student interactions, on, you know, their engagement with instruction, but generally, they were a lot less positive than the staff responses. But they do say that they're either more or equally as productive as they were before the policy, and then 80-plus percent said that their face interactions had increased or remained the same since the implementation of the policy. And here are some of the student comments. One thing that the student comments did bring out as a theme that might be something that we can look at down the road is some sort of compromise during the school day as to location, or a time period, or somewhere where the phones may be allowed. If it's not allowed for the entire instructional day, is there a compromise with a senior lounge, or a study hall, or something like that? Might be something that we might want to explore down the road. And then parents, they had a similar response as before the policy. We did have a lot of parents respond, over 1,000. Most of them were not in favor of the policy as it is for the reasons that really they identified before the school year started. So the cost of the pouches, safety concerns, the discrepancy of the students in the perception, I guess, that students who were abiding by the rules were unfairly impacted by the policy. And then they did say, there was a little bit of commentary on the ability to contact students. So the family members said that it was more difficult for them to contact their children, but about 40% said that they hadn't needed to contact their child at all since the school year started. And we did have doubled back several times with principals to make sure that they're communicating those ways for parents to reach their children during the school day. Here are some of the comments from the parents for you to look over. All right. I'll turn it back over to Mark, and he'll guide the rest of the presentation.
So the notion that, one of the notions that was brought up, or one of the concerns, was the idea around student safety and the concern that if students didn't have access to their devices during the school day, that it would compromise their safety. Some of the things that we just want to point out that were discussed by Steve Chatterton back in the spring, that too many people calling 911 during an emergency would mean that calls would go unanswered. The network itself would be overwhelmed, be very difficult, and so having 1,000 students, for instance, in a building, calling 911 in the event of an emergency is not going to be helpful. As you know, phones are located in every classroom. The district has had that set up for quite some time now, and so if there is a need to contact someone, contact help outside of the school, then there are landlines that are easily accessible. Staff members and security teams also have phones, and those, of course, are accessible throughout the school day. There are over 40 radios in every school. We've also instituted a lockdown app, which allows for a school to be put down in a lockdown in the event of an emergency very, very quickly and rapidly. And confrontations within schools are down significantly, especially those that were inspired by videos, or texts, or various messages through a variety of social media apps that would encourage student conflict. So in many ways, student safety has improved as a result of not having access to these devices. There are some challenges, of course, with this policy. The lack of random searches makes enforcement very, very challenging. As I mentioned before, if a student enters the building and says, "I don't have a phone with me," we just have to let them pass and go on to school. We're not doing random searches. So at the initial week, we saw a very, very high percentage of students that were willingly displaying their device, placing it in the pouch, locking it, and moving on. That percentage has decreased significantly, and students learned pretty quickly that if they simply say, "Don't have my phone with me," that they would be allowed to pass. And there's really nothing that can be done at this point to kind of verify whether or not they have a phone. The use of earbuds in the hallway and in the cafeteria has also become problematic. We were clear that they could not be used in the classroom unless a teacher specifies that they need to be used for a video that's on their Chromebook or something similar to that, but we are seeing students that are using earbuds in the cafeteria and in the hallway. It presents a safety risk, and it's also an indicator that the students, in fact, have a device on them. So in terms of strengths, the spirit of the policy is absolutely working. We heard that today, and in the comments, we see that in the data that Dr. Zaffetz shared. Those four sub-bullets are a repeat of the data from a few slides ago. And again, staff overwhelmingly positive and have really noted that engagement, face-to-face, one-on-one engagement, and more importantly, engagement with academics, is through the roof as a result of this policy. So our recommendations, what we are recommending is that the policy continue. Off-in-a-way did not work in the past. I've been in the district for just about 23 years now, 11 as an administrator, and I can tell you that the use of the Yonder pouches presents a very clear, black-and-white, unequivocal, you're violating the policy by having your device out. It eliminates the conflict struggle and the power, or that power dynamic between students and staff that was alluded to earlier in the comments, and it just really makes it very unambiguous, the application of this policy by having that pouch be part of the system. We'd also recommend that earbuds be included within the enforcement of the policy, that we confiscate earbuds, have parents have to come and pick them up if it's the second infraction, and specify to students that the use of earbuds, especially the AirPods, is a clear indication that you have a device on you that you're not supposed to have, and that would trigger a search, which could then result in a confiscation of a personal electronic device like a phone or smartwatch. Mike and I have recommended to principals, and they are carrying out this week and in the coming weeks, reset assemblies at all of our schools to make sure that all of our students are very, very clear and understand what the policy is. So a nice little reminder after an extended holiday break is always helpful. And then a development of protocols for students with five-plus infractions. We, of course, want our students in our buildings learning each and every day. Out-of-school suspension is not really viable past that five, so what are some of the other things that we could do for students that continue to violate the policy? So at this point, we'll open up to any questions you might have.
Voice for a little more?
I have to go back to the first week of school, and I was relying on social media and hearing horrible things about long lines, pouches being broken, how you break one, which I can now do because I've watched enough videos. But I have to thank John Clifford because that Friday, he posted saying kids are talking to each other, and that just warmed my heart and said we're in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fermer?
Thank you.
Microphone, please.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark. So, thank you. And I will second what Terry says. I didn't see your post, but I heard what you say. I see what's been happening, and I think we are on a good path. You talked about lockdown if something were to happen. How does that work? Do we have the two-sided locks yet put into the, where teachers can lock their doors inside the classroom? Are they in yet, or are we planning on, how's that working?
I believe that Lubianki at our last meeting updated that project had just been completed. So yes, that should all be set.
All right. I have another one.
Any other questions? Mr. Bonagaria.
Thank you. I have to admit, I've never really decided, gee, do I like the Yonder pouches or do I not? But I do know that taking those devices out of the, out of use in a classroom environment has got to be a good thing. And first speaker, Mr. Clifford, I think, commenting on what's helpful to teachers, I think that's got to be a huge consideration because I've got teachers in my family. I know, you know, the issues that they're dealing with. But I do have a question. What is the change? Is it that we have a pouch or that we're enforcing? Because it seems that there, there was also an unambiguous issue before if, if a phone was out and being used in a classroom. So are we doing a better job of enforcing? What's changed?
I think that's a great question, and I can understand where that's coming from. I really do think that there's something to the pouches, though. I go back to that notion of being unambiguous, and that idea that a staff member does not have to engage in a power struggle with a student or have a debate with them. And I could understand someone saying, well, even with off-in-a-way, there shouldn't be a debate, and yet I saw it time and time and time again. The pouch makes it super clear to everyone. If that phone or that watch comes out, you know it's not supposed to be out. There wasn't a, oh, my counselor said I could access it really quickly, or, you know, I just need to check my, my phone just for a quick minute. It's unambiguous, it's clear, there isn't an argument, and that's what the staff is reflecting back to us, that they don't have to get into that struggle with the student, which could create an even bigger issue and lead to an even harsher consequence. So I think there is something to having those pouches. It makes it clear, and it makes it easy to enforce.
I just had one footnote to that. An easy way that I, when it kind of clicked for me, the value of the pouches, I think it was somebody from the Yonder team actually said, it just takes away, eliminates the opportunity for negotiation, or the possibility of a negotiation, because once it comes out, there's not even, there's not, doesn't have to be a discussion. And that was kind of like part of that, the reset.
Any other questions? Mr. Swicki.
So, looking at the Thought Exchange, you know, feedback, you know, one of the ones that struck me personally, right, was around the parents and communicating with their students during the day. I've had that experience, my wife has had that experience, and it's usually our fault because the kid had a dentist appointment and we forgot to tell him, right? And we're like, oh, man, I got to pick you up at 1:30, and you have no idea, right? How do I get that message to you, right? And sure, I can call the office, and fingers crossed, that message gets relayed there, but there's no feedback loop that I know that my kid actually got the message, right? And then further, could send a text. What I've learned in terms of middle school bell schedules is it's pretty tight, right? And so was high school, for that matter. And add in, you know, the nuance of trying to scan your pouch and then hustle to the bus, right? A couple times, I've grabbed, my kids have seen the message on, on the bus and said, oh, man, I got to book it off, and then that becomes a thing, right? So I guess my, my ask or my question, and that's just my personal story, there's a million others like it, right? But how can we do a better job of providing those avenues for the kids? I saw one of the messages there was, you know, providing email access, you know, maybe it's the, the parent, you know, contact group that we already, you know, put our emails, you know, these are the six people that are authorized to send an email to such-and-such account. Are there, are there pathways that we could go to that would allow some direct connection, even if it's not instant, just some loop that I can hold accountable? And I'll finish my speech here in a second, right? But part of this, too, is I don't necessarily want to take time away from district employees to go track my kid down to tell him about a dentist appointment, right? That, that's not a great use of resources either, right? And for me, it just feels like there should be a better way.
Yeah, I'll add a couple of thoughts. So we have really kind of dug in and tried to explore how we can use the Chromebooks for providing a direct contact between families and students. And it's really, it's really been challenging. It's been frustrating and challenging to try to incorporate either a chat with something with Remind, that app, or email. To customize that has proven really difficult, and I think we've kind of exhausted those couple, and we will continue, continue to explore other options. I think there's something to be said, though, to kind of tightening up our communication expectations when it comes to our staff, too, because that's, it's been a learning curve for them as well, because for the past several years, it has been just a text from a parent to a student. So really kind of refining those protocols at the school level to make sure that when a parent calls, there's a process for getting the student, and then we could, you know, certainly consider how to loop back with the family as well, if there's an opportunity there, let them know that the message has been delivered. I had one more thing to say, but it slipped my mind. Did you have any thoughts?
No.
Okay, sorry.
Ms. Fermer?
Kind of going after what John just said. So if you do text your child saying you have a 1:30 dentist appointment, does the child still have to be excused from school?
By the office, or do, are they just leaving? I guess I'm just kind of trying to figure out why the texting works if they still need to go through the office to be able to leave school.
Yes, they would need to, to sign out, but maybe a better example is your appointment's at 3:30, not 4 o'clock, for instance. So not necessarily an example in the middle of the school day of needing to pull the child out, but maybe some...
And I, I mean, just, again, personal experience. The, I think part of that issue, say it's 1:30, and I, my kid doesn't get the message, that means I'm going to show up, he's not going to be aware, I'm going to sign him out just like I normally would, right? But now he doesn't know that his 1:30 block, whatever homework he was supposed to get there, he doesn't go and get that ahead of time, so now he's behind, has to phone a friend for the reading assignment, or whatever the case is, right? It just leads to more logistical hurdles, right? Whereas if you can get that direct contact, he knows. And I can set that own personal, we've talked about this before, family culture dynamics, right? I mean, that is a parent's role as well, to say, hey, listen, I'm going to pick you up early, make sure you grab your things, right? And, you know, you're going to have to make up the work and make the time with the teacher, because guess what? You got braces, and that's late. So anyways, again, just on that point, right, that's why I think that direct contact does end up being helpful, because it has a trickle-down effect, right? Just like anybody, right? If you know something's coming, you can plan for that, plan your day accordingly. Try to afford the same thing for our students and for our own families, too.
Yeah. It's a point well taken, and I think that, you know, we're so used to having instant access to everything, and it's not a, it's not a popular opinion that, you know, we have to kind of make some adjustments, because when I step back and look at all the buildings that I've been to this year, how infrequently I've seen phones. I mean, I have not seen them. It's truly remarkable. As a former building principal, they were out all the time, and it was like whack-a-mole, and now they're not there. And the Thought Exchange data really validated what we were feeling in buildings, and it's, it's great to hear that teachers are seeing the results, that kids truly are engaged. And to me, I think the payoff has, has been worth it.
Mr. Swicki.
Sorry, one more. Switching topics, right? So we talked about the, the offense escalation, right, and going up the levels. For me, I'm just curious, right, you know, is it, is it your experience, or does the data suggest, right, that after someone gets their phone taken away one time, or they, they have the one day in school, is that enough, and is that a big enough deterrent? And your population of two through five offenses is really small, or does the curve go the other way, right? And you got a big, you know, chunk over here that are still violating it, as part of your ask on thinking about different ways to approach that population?
Yeah. From the data that I've seen, it's, it's a small group that are getting to that four and five or beyond, that it's not, it's not a very large. I think that notion of having a parent have to come and pick up the device really gets the parent now involved in the process, and it's inconvenient to have to go and do that. So I think that helps amber the message home.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Flores.
So I was interested in the student who spoke this evening, Maddie Scrivens, and her comments about those students who do always follow the rules. And I know that there are a million laws out there that you have to put them in place, and they have to be zero tolerance to work, or otherwise they don't work. However, are we looking at and considering situations like she spoke about her music class, and how there was a direct impact to them about not having their phones for something that was a really viable need? I see that you have a mobile or portable unlock device. Is there consideration for things such as being able to provide the teacher of that class to say, we're going to do this today, we know we need to use these recordings, we're going to unlock your devices when you come in class, but when you come out of, go back through my door to leave class, I want to see that their phones are going back in your pouches? Are we looking at situations like that to be able to, or are we just at a point where if we start looking at this and we start looking at that, it gets to be too much, and they ask us too much, and then we've just...
Yeah. I'll just say that up to this point, we've really just been focusing on trying to get data to inform whether or not to continue the policy as is. Some of the stuff that came up in the Thought Exchange and from Maddie's comments... Some of the stuff that came up in the thought exchange and from Maddie's comments may present opportunities in the future. We haven't really dug into any of that yet. But, you know, the door's not closed to any of that by any means. But we've really just been focused on the policy as it's written. Is it working? How can we gather data to see whether or not we want to recommend to continue it as it was proposed in the, in the summer?
Ms. Farmer. Microphone.
So the other thing that I heard Maddie say is she was feeling less anxious. And initially, she was very concerned about how she was gonna handle her anxiety. So that, and we all know, if you're addicted to something, that's the feeling that we're gonna get initially as we try to implement change. So I was hopeful. And I certainly hear you, Tammy, in terms of the music class, and I wrote that down, too. So I, I think maybe I'm feeling some good things happening.
Any else? Mr. Bonagario.
Go ahead. You guys are gonna answer all some of my questions. All right.
All right, thanks. So John's question regarding the density of infractions committed by a small number of individuals, kind of brings me back to, to what Tammy just asked and what Madalena suggested. Is there, is there a room? And I'm glad you, you suggested that that might be, that's something you'll consider looking at opportunities for, for the students who do follow the rules to have possibly use of, of their phones in study hall or, you know, wherever it might be appropriate. So that's great. But then it also raises a question which Mr. Thayer brought up earlier, which regards enforcement of the code of conduct. And we've got, and I keep hearing this from a lot of people, parents, teachers, that it's, we don't have a bad population of kids, but we do have a, a small, relatively small number of kids who consistently repeatedly create disruption. And how are we going to deal with that? When, when my kids were small, I, I, my rule with them was I'm gonna count to one. Here we are, we've got, we have the list at five infractions and we're still trying to figure out what, what do we do for students who have more violations? So that's, I think we really need to get our arms around that. And it's, and it has wider implications beyond just this code. So what are your thoughts there?
Well, the one, the one consideration that we have talked about with students who do repeat is that if we follow a traditional consequence where we're just kind, we're ramping up with an in-school suspension or an out-of-school suspension, part of the philosophy behind this was to really support students' mental health, support them with their addiction to the cellphone. If we start to suspend them out of school, you know, the presumption would be that they would go home and they would engage in that behavior at home, whether it's on their phone or social media or what have you. So part of thinking about a consequence, I guess, or an approach to address students who have, you know, gone beyond the five infractions is to try to mitigate that piece of it somehow. And we don't have, I think there's been two students that have come across that have gone up to five. And so we're thinking about trying to mitigate that, but at the same time, hold students accountable for the expectations.
I would add, too, I think what we're trying to do in our buildings is, is shape the behavior and teach students, you know, what we wanna see without just suspending in school or out of school. And so part of our SCL blocks are devoted to curriculum, when it's social, which is a, a student-centered curriculum that teaches students proper use of, of social media, time and place. And so we are trying to address those behaviors through direct instruction as well.
Ms. Farah.
Hi, yes. I was, I'm actually very hopeful for this. I see that in May, there was 1,354 participants, which was parents, students and staff. And now in, it was November, we reached over 4,000 participants. That's double the amount of people that actually participated, whether, again, you're a parent, student or staff. I find it interesting that 3,100 of these, of the people who took the participation into this were students. And again, we, we saw the information, it's not a very popular thing with the students. And of course, I've got four at home. We don't have this problem. I have a zero tolerance. My phone is actually very broken and I hate phones. So I understand teachers when they say that being in the classroom, that it can't happen. I really would actually like to see that we have no Chromebooks in the classroom, but I don't think I'm gonna get my way. But yes, it, it is a concern 'cause there is kind of mixed messaging regarding the yonder pouch. I mean, some kids are getting away with certain things and, you know, they're going to, they're gonna push the boundaries. I haven't met one of my kids yet that hasn't pushed my buttons. So it is, it is disturbing to hear that they are getting to the third, fourth and fifth offense. My main concern is though, it was $100,000 to get this policy right for our taxpayers. And as much as we do need a reboot on this because of everything that's going on, I'm, I'm disappointed that it took this, to this level to get here. But I'm hopefully, very hopeful that this will be done correctly. And, you know, kids will tell you what they wanna tell you and what you, they want you to hear all the time. So I guess that is my, my comment. Again, I think that it's really good that these kids are actually starting to bond with their friends. The, again, we had, actually, I think our GTA member, he had said that the lunchrooms are more chaotic than ever and that's only because of the noise. And noise is good, not in my house, but others, yes. So at the end of all of this, I really hope that this second approach to this, or we need to find something else because the mixed messaging and how it's coming out, there's, there's a lot of parents and students that are not happy, but we've got a lot of staff that are happy. And somehow we have to find a way to make everyone happy with this. And I don't know if there's some conversations that we need to have regarding making different solutions about bringing the cellphones. I don't think it's a great idea for lunch. Take a, take an inch, they will take a mile. But I, I'm hopeful and I hope that this will continue to work.
Ms. Flores.
I was interested in Justin's comment earlier today in talking about the cost of the pouches and such. And I'm curious, obviously, we are only a few months into this and I'm not sure how far advanced we looked into it, but I do think it's a very important point to look at being cost-effective with this. And being that our Chromebooks are things that the kids are responsible for, for returning in and such, are we at a point in what is the policy for what's gonna happen at the end of the year for when these pouches are turned in? Will they be reused? Can they be reused? And how are we looking at this long-term?
Yeah, we don't have a replacement plan necessarily for the pouches. We have some quotes from yonder as far as what they would cost. It's a reduced cost. Year one, there's a higher implementation cost than year two and beyond. So there is a reduction in cost there. But we haven't looked, we haven't looked too far ahead as far as, you know, the inventory as far as returning or reusing. So we haven't gotten that far ahead in the planning.
Any other questions? Mr. Bonagario.
So can a Chromebook fit, someone mentioned it, can a Chromebook fit in the pouch? I didn't, I saw it, I, I didn't think so. So I am aware that there, that we have students who are doing gaming on Chromebooks during class and some students are even bringing accessories, gaming accessories to classes. I think the, the idea of what we're pursuing here should extend beyond phone books and earbuds. We should be looking at the misuse of, of Chromebooks. Have we considered that at all? And I'm not sure if that's, I don't think that's, it's, it's vague as to whether that's covered in this policy. But how, how are we going to address that?
So this policy is specific to personal electronic devices. We have obviously language in the code of conduct that addresses technology misuse and incidents like those should be handled through the code of conduct, through just regular disciplinary process.
So strict enforcement in the same way, but without yonder pouches?
They would be handle and apply to, to Chromebooks.
I understand. I, I mean, so yonder pouches create this unambiguous opportunity to enforce the rule. Do we have a mechanism, some strategy?
No, they use, I mean, they're using their Chromebooks all day. So like just at its base, there's, it's not unambiguous.
Right. They'd also bring, some students also bring in other, other equipment to use with that. I'm, I'm just wondering if we're thinking beyond...
I, I think this presentation was directly, I mean, what we're talking about right now is implementation of yonder. You know, to go into ev, all the, the other devices that exist and the, the code of conduct in the most general way, I don't know that, that, that's not what we are prepared to even talk about today. I, I wanna add, I just wanna point out, this was an attempt to address an issue that we've all said. No one, not any board member and not any community member and not even our students said that we didn't have an issue. We had an issue. We are trying something. All this was, was an attempt to actually here, bring us through a process by which we could make a decision and then implement that decision. And the amount of time and hours that our administrators, teachers, staff members have gone through to implement this well is exorbitant. It's huge. And it's brought really positive impact. I get everyone doesn't like it. Kids don't all like it. I know that we have parents that still don't like it. And I don't believe we're gonna have a policy that's gonna make everybody happy. But I do believe we can do things to make the experience of kids better in school, that we can help alleviate the mental health issue of being online all day and the disruption that it causes in schools. So this is our attempt to give you an update of where we are. We're gonna continue to work and get feedback. This is first quarter. We have three more quarters and we'll continue to update the board and we'll continue to make recommendations. And certainly, we'll be listening to feedback through thought exchange and through our board members. But everything isn't gonna be solved and perfect at the end of the first quarter of an implementation.
Ms. Farah.
I, no, I...
Okay. Ms. Farmer.
Thank you. So just one, and I don't know if this is a question for you. I heard that thought exchange can be, you can submit more than one thought, opinion, survey. It is so, so that, so to me, that sounds like the numbers could be skewed somewhat. Is there another way that we can do a survey or, you know, have people give their opinion without, and I don't know if maybe it, it, people wanna go in again because they have something more to say or if it's just Google Docs?
Why, though? So let me just, and I'm interrupting, but why? So thought exchange allows you to put multiple thoughts in there. So if I don't like the question or if I wanna go in a different direction and give my opinion, I can actually do that. So it's a really broad tool. It's actually a really helpful tool in terms of eliciting and not having people do a five-point scale on three questions.
Right.
So it's really an attempt to get a broader base and get more information. And the fact that 4,000 people took it is a great thing. It means that more people are engaged and wanting to give their input. So I guess I, rather than go in 1,000 directions about what tool and Chromebooks and other things, we, I wanna just narrow us around looking at this, how it's being implemented, what are we seeing? We don't have to fix everything immediately. And I think it's okay to live in a space where everything's not perfect so that when we do make adjustments, we're being really thoughtful. And then it's based on, like, some longevity in terms of kids living with this and families living this, with this for a little bit longer.
So it's, it's absolutely a work in progress.
Yes.
And as we continue to move forward, I believe, and I've seen it, when the district that I worked for, kids begin to take this in stride, it's part of their day, it's part of what they do. And so thank you for answering that question.
And I will also say, if you talk to kids, if you walk down the hallway, they're not complaining about not having their phone. Like, they're actually happy and, but knowing that they were taking a survey, of course, they're gonna give you their opinion.
Right.
You know, they're not dumb. So, you know, they knew that that was a great place and that's how they feel. I respect that. But when you see them in school, they're not miserable and unhappy.
Yeah.
So just my, my two cents.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other questions before I wrap up? Mr. Bonagario.
Just a clarification. This is, this is creating some positive results. That's great. I do think it, it would be good to consider possibly extending it. It's something to think about down the road. I agree, we don't, we won't solve everything overnight, but if we're finding success in an area, we may find further success. So, thanks.
Any other questions before I wrap up with a question and a comment?
All right. Question, the earbuds.
Yes.
Coming back to that, is that gonna be discussed in these meetings that you're mentioning that are happening this week and in the night, in the coming weeks, the earbuds? So everybody's gonna be aware of the earbuds moving forward?
Yes.
Awesome. And just as a comment, listening to students, teachers, staff members, some parents, from a Greece Central standpoint, this is probably in 15 years, one of the programs that work the best. That how it started, we decided we had a problem. I've said this before, I'm gonna say it again. We realized we had a problem. There was feedback from everywhere in this district about cellphones and electronic device use. And as a board, we mentioned it to the superintendent, the superintendent put together a committee. You, you guys ran a committee involving teachers, parents, students. A cross-section of people in this district came with a plan to the Board of Education in the spring. The plan came forward, the board adopted the plan. We're seeing success currently with the plan. Students are engaged. I believe Mr. Clifford said that the dance number went to 450 from, they were basically canceling them before because they had no student involvement. Students are engaged, are engaged with each other. That was the goal. The social, emotional learning aspect was a goal of this program. We're seeing positive results. Is it perfect? No. Is everybody gonna be happy? No. I disagree with my colleague that we're gonna find a solution to make everybody happy. You can't find a solution to make everybody happy with anything. Somebody is always upset about the solution you come up with. So I do think it's important. I think it's great what we're doing. I wanna see this program continue. I think it's gonna, it should be a long-term answer in the Greece Central School District to take that off the table. To take that conflict cycle that our teachers mentioned, you guys mentioned, off the table. It just makes it easy. It's the honor bag, boom. You don't have it, we're moving on. You know, you violated the rule. There's no discussion, there's no, I wanna argue with you, Mr. Fleming. That's not what's happening. So I do think this is a great program. Are there tweaks that need to be made? Absolutely. But with any program, you make tweaks. Like you guys discovered the earbud thing, gotta make a tweak, we gotta do something. That's what we're doing. That's what this program is designed to do and come up with solutions to keep our students engaged, keep our kids out of the conflict cycle, stop the conflict in our buildings. That's what this was intended to do and that's what it's doing. So I'm tremendously proud of everybody, of your committee, the district-wide committee, of the Board of Education and the community that are buying into this currently. You're not happy, but it's working and the results show it's working. So I think that's super important. With that, I wanna thank you both. I'm sorry it went so long and now the Board of Education is recessed for five to seven minutes.
Thank you.
One-year increments. So basically, we looked at this document as a one-year action plan that's going to ultimately lead us to the outcomes we want to see in our five-year strategic plan. And so our goals are centered around those same goals in the REACH 2027 document, ignite learning, cultivating trust, and expanding opportunities. So this is just a screenshot snippet of some of the action plan templates that we have to submit to New York State and how we modeled that after the strategic plan. So a strategy, one of our strategies is to prioritize adult learning. And so in there, you'll see that there are some, our optional PL opportunities that we put in there. What does this strategy entail? We have a description of that. And then how are we going to gauge success? So we took the strategic plan outcome of the five-year goal. What do we want to do just this year? So it's almost, we call that a good enough vision in order to meet our ultimate vision of our five-year plan that we hope to be at. So we hopefully will see that there is more, an increase of staff taking professional learning, that we see that, that we're building a culture of learning. And so we're not going to get that in, in one year, but what will we see hopefully? Just a little bit of an increase of teacher response around this process. And so we sort of mirrored that for all of our action steps that are aligned with that strategic plan. So you'll see just a visual here of the REACH 2027 document, how that is an overlay of our DCEP commitments, and then how our schools fit in underneath that with their own individual plans. So I mentioned before that we have identified schools. So we have one CSI school or a comprehensive support and improvement school. That CSI school is based on the all-students designation that Mike talked about, which is basically the entire student population of Longridge Elementary School. Again, this is going back to 2018 data. And so they're just one of the identified schools that has been along on this journey since the beginning of ESSA. And I know they've made a lot of improvements. And so hopefully with the new designations, they will be off of the list. But it, they are targeted and have a SCAP plan for their all students, not a specific subgroup.
Part of our designation also includes TSI schools. Those are targeted support and improvement schools. Those are, again, based on that 2018 data, those performing in the state for one or more subgroups. So going back to those subgroups that Mike identified earlier in the presentation. Currently, we have three schools that are identified as TSI, Olympia, Craig Hill, and Lake Shore. And those schools, along with Longridge, need to complete a SCAP, or a School Comprehensive Education Plan, which is the state's language for a school improvement plan. That's the plan that these schools need to follow in order to meet the targets that the state has designated. So my goal today, our goal, is to just kind of take you through the calendar and what the SCAP looks like in terms of implementation. It starts in the fall. The district SCAP team, that includes Christine, Mike, Cedric, Dave Blauwitz, and me, we will go and visit these schools just to get a sense of what their school improvement plan or their SCAP looks like. What are the commitments that they are making? What are the goals they're focused in on? What strategies are they utilizing within their school to meet their targets? So that happens in the early fall. The second meeting, I think, is a really great example of how this process really is making the school improvement process collaborative and useful for schools. The second visit, and this is a screenshot that you, that we took from the state of New York, I'm not going to read this entire table to you, but that second visit, if you look at that first row, the purpose is to learn insights from staff and students regarding the implementation of the school improvement plan, or the SCAP. So in that second visit, the, the central office SCAP team, along with the corresponding ASI and corresponding directors, are getting input from students and from staff. So we're conducting focus groups to find out from them, are you aware of the goals that you're working on? How are the, what are the strategies that your school is utilizing in order to help you meet those goals? How are they working? So we're getting feedback from stakeholders and really making that document viable and useful for all. At that same visit, that second visit in the late fall, we're also conducting walkthroughs. So it's not just about the, the focus groups. We're also pushing into classrooms to see what are teachers and students doing, and how does that align with the SCAP plan that the building team has articulated. The third visit happens in mid-January or early February. And we, at that point, are checking to see, that feedback that we gave you from that second visit, how's that working? What tweaks or what adjustments have you made to your school improvement plan in order to help you meet your targets? And then we've layered on a process on top of what the state has mandated, and that is data dives. We do three of these of year, a year, one in the fall, one at the mid-year point, and one in June. And these data dives are an opportunity for building teams to really pause, take a look at their data, and see in what ways is our school improvement plan meeting, or our SCAP, meeting our targets. They're taking time out of the buildings with their small teams to look at student attendance and academic data to see, hey, do we need to make any adjustments to our SCAP? We then round out the process with two more meetings. There's a visit in mid-March to early April. And at that meeting, we're starting to take a look again at how the current plan is going, but talk about the, the development of the plan for the next school year. So for our four-sighted schools, we'll be visiting them in March and April and looking at the development of the 23-24 SCAP. And then in June, we have that final data dive, which counts as our final visit, where again, teacher teams get together with their building admins, take a look at the data from the school year. Did we meet our targets as specified by the SCAP? And what adjustments do we need to make going forward for our new SCAP? So this is really a nice system that helps get in stakeholder voice from our teachers, from our students, from our, our district and building leaders, in the, in the goal of meeting those targets academically that we need to make. Any questions?
Mr. Maloney.
Now, is there, was there someone from the state that actually goes through with you, or is this your visits and your implementations of this plan?
So currently, the state is only looking at our CSI submission, which is Longridge, and our DCEP. The TSI is under local review, so they rely on us as central office employees to oversee our TSI schools.
But they only, they only receive the information that you send. They actually don't send a body up here to walk through the halls with you, or, or do they?
So they've done it differently each year. So this year, we actually have a Coaching for Excellence grant for our CSI schools. And so we have designated coaching staff and other employees that need to travel to Albany for conferences this year. That's how they're doing that. And then we, they do have a state ed connection, though, that they're, they're speaking to. We haven't had somebody come out and visit.
We did.
In a, in a while. Originally, they did, but it's been a few years since they've done that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one. Longridge has obviously been on there for an extended period of time. We've been working and working. I mean, do we see Longridge coming off of there eventually? Or is, you know, obviously, we've seen some improvement. Do we see the improvement being great enough to eventually remove Longridge from that list?
Yeah.
Or realistically, is that probably not?
I'm hopeful. It's so hard, though, to see because even though we have our state ed report card that's, that's come out and other measures of data, it's really hard because it's always based on the ranking against all other schools, against New York State. So until we see the impact of COVID and how everyone performs and who's the lowest, I really don't have a guess. I'm hopeful because I know there's been so much good work with the coaching and so many measures on that. The staff should be incredibly proud of the work that they've done. But really, it's all going to just be determined by how it.
Plays out.
How it plays out, yeah.
Awesome.
Can I just add another footnote? So this, this is actually the first opportunity that any of our schools have had to come off of a designation since they were first designated, largely because of the pandemic. So, well, we'll, we'll see. But this is the first time.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Moving on to 5.01 Audit Committee Report. Chairman Swicki.
Thank you, President McCabe. As I mentioned in my last update, the Audit Committee received the single audit report for 2122 and reviewed it as part of our meeting on December 5th. The report represents an examination of all programs for which the district receives federal financial assistance, and the result was another clean opinion from our external auditor. With that in mind, the Audit Committee reviewed and accepted the report and recommends the same for the board this evening. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Chairman Swicki? All right, moving on, 6.01 Change Orders. Can I have somebody move the change order to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Flores, seconded by Mrs. Farmer. Any comments, questions, or concerns? The only comment I'll make is the change orders in the amount of $19,059.72. Do you have a question?
I do, sorry.
No, you're good.
So, so this said, this is my first change order. Anything to do with money question, so.
So it says, this change order increases its, and there's a, there's a back charge that we're going to be, yeah. So what does that mean? So we have 19,000 extra that we have to pay, and then we're going to get some of that money back? Who am I talking to?
Romeo.
Oh, Romeo. Okay, sorry, Romeo.
So what will happen with this, with Hewitt Young? There were two reasons for the increase of 19,000. One of it, one of the reasons was just unforeseen conditions. They took down the ceiling. They see there's more asbestos. We have to pay for that. The second reason for the increase is they had novice people there who didn't do the job correctly and thus caused us to have to redo it. That portion will be charged back to the fee that we paid to Hewitt Young.
So we will get some money back.
We'll take it off the fee that we owe them, correct?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all is in favor. That passes eight to zero. Moving on to the acceptance of the single audit report. Can I have somebody move that to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Flores, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that? Seeing none, all is in favor. That passes eight to zero. The budget status report, it's information only. Does anybody have any questions? Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have somebody move the consent agenda to the table, please? Moved by Mr. Maloney, seconded by Vice President Lor. Any comments, questions, or concerns on that?
I would just like to thank the Greece Education Foundation for their donations across the district of what amounted to 414,294 dollars. I'd like to thank the Arcadia Class of 72 for a donation they made to, in the memory of Roy Baumann. I'd also like to thank the Arcadia High School Extra Classroom for payment of DJ at the gala, the Athena Extra Classroom for payment of the DJ at the winter dance, and payment for the prom deposit. And I'd also like to thank RIT for the donation they made. With that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving into policies. We'll start with policy 1330. Can I have that moved to the table, please? Moved by Mrs. Farmer, seconded by Mrs. Flores. Comments, questions, or concerns? On 1330, I'm just, I'll just say this once, for all policies, the Policy Committee voted to bring these to the board and supported these policies. So with that, any other questions on 1330? Seeing none, all is in favor? That passes eight to zero. Second read of policies, we'll move to 7130, entitlement to attend. Any comments on that? Can somebody move this table for me? Moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Vice President Lor. Any comments? All right, seeing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to graduation options, 7221, early graduation accelerated programs. Can I have somebody move that to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mr. Swicki. Comments, questions, or concerns on that one? Seeing none, all is in favor? Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Moving on to 2370. Can I have somebody move that to the table, please? Moved by Ms. Farmer, seconded by Ms. Flores. Comments, questions, or concerns on this one? Ms. Farah?
Um, the 2370. So just so everyone knows, this is a request that should include the written reasons describing, this is a Board of Education made to be, from the superintendent and the board president. Now, I see that there were a few things that were crossed off. Kind of give a little bit. No one knows what we're talking about, so it's kind of hard to do this with that thing. So I'm going to read a little bit of this. The Board of Education shall abide by the following when requested: using district information, data, and/or trends. Requesting information and data and trends gathered by district staff that help me to make a better informed decision about the operation and district policies affecting student achievement. Use of information, data, trends represented by all of my constituents avoiding use of information, data, trends supplied to me for personal gain, respect for confidentiality of privileged information. So for that purpose only, my question is, when we are elected as board members, we all are elected for our own particular reasons. That's why we all earned a seat at the table. So when we take out the word "me" or "of" "my" or "to me," you're actually taking away our voices personally when you're taking away and you're saying, "Help to make a better understanding." We actually have to make that. We're the ones that are approving, and we're the ones that are actually voting on these. So taking the words of "me" or "my" or "to me" out of an actual policy, it actually concerns me because it, not only does it take away my voice, but it takes away Tammy's voice or anything that we have to do. Going forward, the information below where it says the superintendent and the Board of Education, who review these policies every three years, what's crossed off is education. So instead, we're, we are adding the superintendent and the board officers. What does that mean? Who does that change that to?
Basically, when a policy, before it comes to the Policy Committee, it would get reviewed by superintendent, legal, and the board officers. Then it comes to policy, where these policies all went to. There's discussion there. That's what we consider our first read. Then it comes to you guys. So the, so the change is really, it doesn't, it never went to the full Board of Education, once we adopted a Policy Committee approximately 11, no, probably 13 years ago, we adopted a board. So that never got changed. That's the way it's been. It never went to the full board. We used to do a full read. The first read was always the Board of Education. So it always went to the board. Now we have the Policy Committee, so it goes to the Policy Committee.
Okay.
So that's.
So it doesn't really change the verbiage?
No, it doesn't. No. I mean, your other areas change verbiage. I mean, but I don't understand where you want. What, if you're looking to amend something, or what you're looking to do, I guess I'm, or you're just pontificating. I'm not sure.
Yes, I, I would actually like to make a motion to amend this, to actually keep the verbiage in there that says "me," "of," "my," and "to me." Because, again, we, we were all elected to these positions, and then taking us out of that, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't go over for good board governance at all. That would be my suggestion.
I guess I'm, I, I don't know what you're referring to, I guess. I guess I'm confused. I'm looking, I'm looking at my strike poll. Oh, there. I don't have, oh, yeah, I have that. Oh, so. I mean, I, I guess I'll respond. I mean, while there's an amendment on the floor, so you need a second. Then we'll talk about your amendment. Is there a second on your amendment?
For the interest of stopping the conversation, I'll second.
All right. All those in favor of, okay, while it's on the floor, so we'll discuss that. So I guess my point with these is, basically, it was just a language clarification. I mean, use of information, data, and trends to represent all constituents. That's everybody in the school district. All everybody in the school district is your constituent. They're my constituent. I don't see what the "my constituents" is, I guess, divisive terminology, in my opinion, on that one. Avoid using the information, trends supplied to me for personal gain. I mean, again, you shouldn't be using data that you receive from the Greece Central School District to benefit you personally. So I mean, again, I, I'm going to speak against your amendment because I think these were just cleanup languages, and you're looking in a different manner that I don't agree with. I mean, I think we considered this and took those out because it's a broader sense is what we're looking to do.
Okay.
So I guess, I mean, I, I, I mean, I, I don't understand a little bit, some of your position on that. I mean, we're not looking to exclude anything from you. I mean, it's all here. The information that got added, the bolded at the top, basically came from the regulation. So we were required to do that anyway by regulation. We just incorporated it in a policy so it was clear to everybody. So anybody coming into the board, if you didn't know that there was a regulation attached to this policy, it's now all there. We basically, I believe, we got rid of a regulation.
Yeah.
And it just incorporated this. So it's all now in the policy. Instead of having a policy in a reg, we've just combined it all into a policy.
Okay. Well, that's good to know because otherwise, we wouldn't be having this conversation if I hadn't questioned this. So, okay, if that's how this looks. Because sometimes when you change, when you take wording out, it changes the whole entire meaning of a sentence and.
I, I, I mean, I, I don't think it did. I mean, does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make? All right. So on the amendment, all those in favor of returning the "of my" and the "me," I think it's just a, yeah, the two "mes" in there, back. All those in favor? Signify by raising their hand. Any opposed? Are you opposed? Or are you in favor?
I'm in favor.
Okay. So the amendment fails one to seven. Back on the main policy. We're back on the main policy. Is there anybody with questions or comments on the main policy? Mr. Bonagorio.
I, I think I understand the spirit of the, of the change in the language. We have a very busy district of employees, and requests are made for information. There has to be a means of, of bringing some efficiency to providing relevant information to board members. I think currently, we have everything in place that's needed. I can say from personal experience, I've brought requests to the superintendent and the president of the board. I have either received the information or have not. I think we have, as a board, the ability to, if, if, the requests that I have not received information on, the board has the ability to say, that has to be provided. I think that inserting these rules requiring a majority of the board to, to allow any complex request just creates a greater barrier. I think we already have in place what is needed. We have the ability to have civil dialogue with each other and to, to say, we can't get that right now. And if, and if it's deemed that it's something that, that is needed, we have the ability to go back as a board and, and request that. So I think this unnecessarily makes higher hurdles in, and prevents a easier flow of information to board members.
Does anybody have any comments before I respond? Ms. Flores?
The way that I look at this is, as a board member, I may have the right to ask for specific information, but as an elected official, it is my understanding that I am allowed information same as the public. I am not an employee of this district. I am not entitled to privileged information. So when we have conversations about what we need to do in order to discuss things, I am one-ninth of one vote, is how it was explained to me. So in order for us to be able to take a look at that, we have to be able to discuss it, and we all have to agree on it, which is the majority. If any one of us attempts to act individually, that is not the spirit of this board, from what I understand. Thank you.
I'm just going to comment. I think I know, and I, correct me, Mr. Bonagorio, if I misinterpret what you're saying in my response. But I guess, that language was put in so an individual board member, and I'm going to pick on Dr. Payne, Sean McCabe can't email Dr. Payne or call Dr. Payne and say, hey, I want to know X about the Greece Central School District and our elementary schools. And she turns around and goes to Kathy and says to Kathy, Sean's requested this information, but it's going to take me and my team an entire week or two weeks to put this together, countless hours to put this together. Do you really want to do this? And without this in there, that's really what we're allowing board members to do, is to decide what Dr. Payne's doing, or Dr. Zaffet's, or, you know, Todd Smith, or Mark Fleming, or Christine Baker. We're dictating their work schedules, and it could be on a wild goose chase, that it's only information that I really want. Nobody else on the board might want it, but the taxpayers in Greece Central are now funding that position to do my research that I want, that's important to me. That's not appropriate, in my opinion. That's why we added that language. So I mean, I, I get your point. And I mean, I think most information is provided. I mean, maybe not in a manner that some people would like, but I think we're pretty transparent when it comes to information requests, whether through the Freedom of Information Law, or through, you know, just basically general requests for information from parents and from others. I mean, I can tell you, in a lot of government agencies, besides the Greece Central School District, any information you request, myself, I'll use myself as a county legislator in this fine county, any information I request from the county, I have to do a FOIL request for. I'm entitled to no information unless it's on the website. Everything I have to foil. Any information I want, I have to foil unless it's on the website, under one of the departments, et cetera. So I mean, we do have it very transparent, but I also don't think it's appropriate. And the county could turn around and say, Sean, your request is going to cost the taxpayers of Monroe County X number of dollars. We're not going to be able to, you know, provide you this request. And that's what happens. So I think this language basically protects the board, it protects the taxpayers from a board member, you know, and I'm not saying any of the nine of us are that way, but you could have a board member that puts staff on wild goose chases, and that's not where we want them devoting their time. We want them working on the DCIP program. We want them working on the cell phone policy. We want them working on the code of conduct. We have 100 other areas where we want them working and to put them on a wild goose chase because Sean McCabe wants to know how many second graders across the Greece Central School District pick their nose. And Dr. Payne's got to do a study and put out a survey and do this and do that. Suzanne's in counting kids and doing her thing. That's not appropriate use of district resources, and that's why this was added. There's no intention of anybody on the board or anybody in the administration or myself to hide any information from any member of the Board of Education or the public. It's just got to be pertinent information that's easily accessible. And if it's going to take Dr. Payne a significant amount of time to do it, then four of my other colleagues should say, yep, Sean, we want to know how many second graders picked their nose. If Dr. Payne is going to focus her and her team on this, then four of you should be, yep, that's good information, Sean, we should know that. Or if you guys say, no, Sean, that's not appropriate. Okay, I lose. And that's fine. That's where it should go. And that was the intent of this policy.
I've already made my, my comments, so thank you.
Anybody else? All those in favor of the policy? Any opposed? That passes seven to one. Moving, oh, six to two. I'm sorry. Moving on to board member comments. Does anybody have any board member comments? We're doing late tonight, so. Anybody has any comments? Ms. Farah? Go ahead.
I will make this quick as we are going. I noticed, and I'm going to say this, congratulations on retirement for Janet Norton. She was a cook for 30 years in the district. So congratulations to her. She is taking her retirement. I think she's done with that already now, Christmas break, I believe. I want to thank also the resident forum speakers. Last month and this month, I was not able to be here. I appreciate you do listen to what you have to say. And some of it is not something that we want to hear, but we definitely need to hear it. Last but not least, girls soccer, grades three through six. Coach Sabutera, who was back in my day at Greece, he did the boys, but the girls are looking for extra players. So if you know anyone who's in grades three through six, definitely get ahold of Coach Putera. We need to finalize our teams. And that is it.
Awesome. Anybody else? Mr. Bonagorio?
Very quickly, in the past couple of years, I've had opportunities to come before the board and speak my piece. I have appreciated that the board makes this forum available. And I appreciate that the board has been willing to hear comments. Dr. Schreewich has been a frequent commentator, commentator of, you know, there, we have to hear things that we don't always want to hear. In that light, I'm disappointed that a speaker, the last two months, has been shut down without having an opportunity to hear whether her comments are meaningful to us or not, and my comments.
Any other board member comments? Mr. Farmer?
Sure. Well, I also feel similar, having President's forum come in. I believe that when a school district is being. I believe that when a school district is being, being told they're not doing certain things right, or this or that, and then I get to hear a mother or community member stand up and use a vulgarity during a meeting, that is extremely disturbing because if we're going to do this together, you can't, you can't expect the school district to do this alone. So role modeling starts at home, and I accept this, I've heard past several meetings, I believe. I engage people, call, come and see us, talk to us. But when we have community members stand up and use vulgarities, even though they might have lost their trust in the public school of education, it is not okay. And when we end up showing that to our children, we are not setting a good example for our children.
Mr. Swicki?
Just a personal comment for, for my daughter again, and this goes to, actually, the girls' basketball camps that are going on at some of the elementary schools as an intro to, I'll say, the seed that starts the program, right, in the interest. My daughter had no interest in playing basketball, right? And then she ran into a friend who was like, "Hey, I'm doing this camp thing, you should check it out," right? So now, we are like a basketball family, and I have to, we have practice, you know, twice a week, and we go to this camp, and then I got GBA on Sundays, and it's great. I mean that, right?
You're welcome.
But, yeah, thank you for inspiring my daughter, right? But I, but I do mean it, right? It's, it's a, it's a great program. There's, some of my former coaches are there, actually running it. Ironically enough, they run the same drills, which weren't as fun in high school for me, so my daughter's loving that part of wind sprints. But nonetheless, it's, it's a great experience to get some exposure to sport, try it out. And I, I do see that seed, and hopefully, it, you know, buds and blossoms into a flower. I know there's other programs there, so, parents, I, I was always late to the table. I still am late to the table. I feel like I'm the last to know. You know, and I found out from a friend of a friend, right? I still think we got to figure out a way to communicate it more. I know, we always say, it's out there a million times, I need it one more time, I think, right? But I think it's, it's a great program, and it's a great thing we're doing, pushing into the community, and it should be good things for our sports program and our athletics in the future, too. So thank you for that.
Any other board member comments? Vice President Lor?
I'd like to commend the community schools program. We have 300 meals for the holidays in December. It was wonderful to see the families and know that we're helping people have a nice holiday. I had the opportunity to go to the Greece Community Early Learning Center, and I'm in love with that place. It is so nice to see, well, I want to, Shan and Heller, the principal, Julie Parsons, who's doing pre-K. It's so nice to see young, young children already in school, learning things, having the support of learning, or language and stuff, right away. And I, I see a bright future. I also want to thank Wegman's beautiful mural that they put up in one of the rooms. We're heading in the right direction with our young ones, and I'm thrilled about it.
Thank you, Vice President Lor. I just, I'm going to be super brief tonight. I'm so excited about the girls' flag football pilot that we're starting this year in Greece Central. It's awesome. I've been following it, and Buffalo started at Erie County, Section 6. It's a lot of participation, it's really awesome, so I'm really looking forward to our girls' flag football this summer. And on another football note, everybody's obviously heard about Damar Hamlin, you know, his injury, or the event he suffered last night. And I just want to encourage everybody, from 30 years' experience in EMS, rapid CPR, and learning how to use an AED are super important. So I'd encourage all my colleagues, and we can make it happen on the board if the board's interested. We can do a CPR course with an AED. I would encourage everybody in the community, there, I mean, everything played perfect for him last night. I mean, he had an AED there, CPR was started within seconds, and the outcome is most likely going to be positive. So from his standpoint, that's huge. That doesn't happen every day. There were a lot of days I did CPR at work, and the outcome wasn't like it was last night. They didn't even leave the house sometimes. So it is super important, and I encourage everybody to do that. And with that, Superintendent Grauman, you're up.
Yep. I, I want to point out a couple of things. As a superintendent, I've been superintendent for eight years, and one of the things that I've worked hardest at is listening. I have come to the table humbly on many, many occasions with families, with students, with board members, who have had bad experiences or issues or something that they need to solve. On top of that, we've worked to hire leaders in this district who also carry those same values around listening and around humility. I say that because there is nothing and no one that we have in our system that is unwilling to listen and hear good and bad from our community. And I will say, we have found ways and, and sought out ways to get feedback from families and, and from teachers and from staff members and from students, more so than I would say most districts in the state or the nation. Parent exchanges, surveys, thought exchanges, panels, SEPTA meetings, I mean, I could go, I could create a huge list. And the point there isn't to only focus on the good, but the idea is that we can build on good. We build on strengths. It's important to recognize where people are not happy or what's not working, but it's also important to bring out the good so that we can build on it. So I appreciate the fact that people may come to a board meeting to share, but it does nothing if you're not going to be part of a solution. It does nothing if you're only coming to air a grievance. The idea of coming with solutions in mind is exactly what we need to make our system better, and you've got a group of people who are absolutely willing to do that. So I just, I think that's really, really important to sort of punctuate and say. And I, and I also want people to realize that just because something isn't addressed out loud at a board meeting doesn't mean it hasn't happened or that people aren't working on it. There are a lot of ways for people, that people reach out quietly through an email, "Meet with me, meet with different people," where we're solving and making things better. And just because it didn't happen up at that podium doesn't mean that we didn't see it, that we didn't know it, or acknowledge it, or that it's not true. But it's finding productive ways to work on things and make us better as a system, and I would argue that we are. And we're not perfect, but we're working on things.
Thanks, Superintendent Grauman. Mr. Maloney, it's your time to shine. But no, I'm not going to let you do it now because we're going, I need a motion to go into exec session. Moved by Ms. Flores, seconded by Mr. Maloney. All those in favor? Oh, it's to discuss pending litigation. All those in favor? I'm sorry, I wasn't looking. Any opposed? That passes eight to zero. Thank you, everyone.